Village Board of Trustees for Tuesday, October 14th to order. And we'll start with the roll call, please.
Blackwood.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Trundle.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
All right, I am acting in my role as President Pro Tem because Mr. Brunig is unable to make the meeting today, so. Now, let's do proof of posting.
The agenda is posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Center, the post office, Badger Bank, and the Village Board.
All right, and now we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Kristin, do you want to lead us?
Yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. All right, we are now on to public comment. Does anyone want to start the meeting with a public comment? Right, excellent. We will move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion from someone to approve the consent agenda?
Blackwood will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Trundle will second.
All right, the consent agenda consists of the minutes and the operators licenses. I saw a correction that needed to be in the minutes that I sent to Yessi this morning, earlier. It had to do with the court, in the correspondence section of the meeting. I didn't ask to have Kenny Johnson submit a proposal, but instead it was for the water down at the ponds. So I just made that clarification. Yeah, for that matter, was the one, yeah.
Got it.
And then the plan commission meeting that was yesterday, did that start at 5:45?
Uh, 6:30.
Okay, so that's another correction, then, that would need to be in those minutes, because it lists that at 5:45. Those were the only thing I saw. Anybody else see anything in either of the items for the consent agenda?
Nothing from me.
All right, then I've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, and the motion carries. We will move on into our committee reports. Audit and Finance Committee.
Why don't you do it, because I have plan commission.
Oh, lucky you. Okay.
Thanks. So we did kind of our first, we had our first meeting, and overall, I thought it was a productive meeting. Just kind of started looking at the overall picture, what are possibilities to look at as far as areas for reductions, look at, you know, and just kind of get the, it was a very broad overview meeting, look at, it was a huge packet, it was, what, 500 and some pages, so it was a little bit to absorb. But, so we have another one on the 23rd to take a little deeper look into and start looking into things.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the Audit and Finance Committee? All right, then, let's move on to Economic Development. Can anyone speak to the Economic Development meeting?
I guess I'll take that one. So, economic development, we went over some documentation. The final piece for the room tax ordinance was an application for the nonprofits to apply for the said funds that would be raised from that, and that was the final piece of, I think I created six documents, and so that was the final piece, and it'll go on the next agenda so that the members had time to review. And then also need some housekeeping for the garland on Main Street, the flowers for next year. There was also, they directed staff to work on the economic development page on the website. They would like, then that's where all the documents will be for the room tax ordinance and the mural ordinance and other related things, and as well as a placeholder for economic development news or updates.
What was that item with the garland?
That was, they just wanted to make sure that we were in communication with the Abbott Gardener so that it was ordered for this. They wanted that public works staff to have it up the day before Thanksgiving. I stated that we have Thursday and Friday, that might be difficult as a lot of staff take off that week. And so then they asked to have it up and all up the week before, with the emphasis being on Small Business Saturday. Part of this, which I've learned a lot, is that you can't, we don't know when we're going to get it, because it has to do with the weather and the frost.
Yep.
So it was a learning experience for me. And then, when we do get it, which our Public Works Director purchased the special spray, and then it needs to sit for several days, and that is to keep it to last longer and stay green longer. So, as much as they would like a specific timeline, we're kind of at the mercy of the weather when we get it.
Okay.
Personnel, but it's been noted, and we're where.
And what are concerns about flowers for next year?
I was told that the orders needed to be put in, like, now for next year to the Abbott Gardener. And so our Public Works Director also talked to her regarding that. That will most likely be an item that we ask again when it's time for the Cambridge Community Foundation.
Great. Go ahead.
That we get assistance from that with our budget restraints, but just that, getting that communication going, so nothing falls through the cracks on that.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Anybody else have any other questions about economic development? All right, let's move on to Fire and EMS Commission.
All right, so we had a four municipality joint meeting last week, which majority of us were in attendance. Overall, I thought it was a very good meeting. I thought it was probably one of the most productive multi-municipality meetings that we've had in the last two years, so that was a good thing. We have our next fire commission meeting tomorrow, actually, so we are, we were tasked with a list of duties to go through. We have a 20, I was just looking at the agenda, we have a 22 item agenda.
Oh, my goodness sakes.
For tomorrow night, so it's going to be a long one, but it should be a good one, so.
You guys aren't going to, like, retry and rework the whole budget, right?
No.
Because we had, we had talked about, at the beginning, we said you should, and then at the end, we're like, no, don't bother doing that.
Yeah, I don't think we'd be able to make any.
Any significant.
Sizable cuts, and for all of us to be comfortable with it, even as just a discussion amongst the commissioners, we'd have to shave off $500,000.
Right.
And I don't think boxes of paper clips and Band-Aids are going to do that.
There we are.
Our treasurer did break out kind of a rough mock-up of what a fire-only budget would look like, so we'll be able to bring that back to the next board meeting to kind of talk through and get an understanding of that. And we'll hopefully get those amendments for change of service and, or ability to have change of service if we want to.
Excellent. All right, anybody have any questions for Kristin? All right, thank you. Let's move on to the Library Board.
Thank you. We had our meeting on October 8th. The library director shared with us that Baker &amp; Taylor, who is the main book distributor for libraries across the nation, has gone out of business. So they are looking for alternate vendors. The impact on patrons would be wait times for new books. October is the number two largest, or the month that has the most book releases in it coming, upcoming for Christmas. So there are a couple other vendors in that space, but potential for additional cost and additional wait times as all that gets worked out, not just with Cambridge's library, but all libraries across the nation. There were a couple of resignations from the staff, and then also a board member resigned, so we'll have a board member opening that should be posted on the website. So those were the big items at the library.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jennifer? Personnel Committee.
Jennifer, you want that? I can do it, it doesn't matter. So we met last Thursday, sorry, had a very big agenda, didn't get through a lot of the items that we had on there, just, we had some discussions on some personnel issues, and we are going to take a different approach on the handbook and approach it from more of a policy, policy and procedure-driven document rather than suggestions, I guess is kind of what our current one comes through as. So we are going to meet, I don't, did we choose, we did not choose a different one, but there were a bunch of policies and things that were brought forth to us that we wanted to have a little bit more time to be able to go through.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments for Personnel Committee?
Anything else, Jennifer, that I missed?
We talked about open enrollment and how that's impacting staff.
Yes.
With the change, like Dean has their open enrollment now, and then as we're going to a different vendor, that there would just be communication from administration about how that's going to work.
Okay. That's right.
Excellent. All right. Thank you both for chiming in. Plan Commission.
Yes, we met last night. There were four action items for us to vote on. The first one was in regards to vacating.
How many of those are later on the agenda? Because we can address those later in the agenda, too.
That's fine, I can wait, yeah, they're on the agenda.
Okay, so is pretty much everything you talked about on the agenda for today?
Well, except I did not get a chance to look at the amendments that Yessi sent out. Is the Lucille Court one on here? Because we voted that, voted no on that, so that wouldn't be coming to us today.
So the way that that works whenever we have a public hearing is it's always going to be on the Village Board agenda.
Okay, I didn't know if it was taken off.
So no, that wasn't amended.
Okay.
If the Plan Commission did not recommend that to the Village Board, normally it would be tabled, and we can discuss that.
Yeah, let's talk about that when we get there.
When we get to that item.
Because, because people can make a recommendation to the board, and the board still deliberates it and decides what the final answer is.
Gotcha. I thought if it didn't pass through Plan Commission, it didn't come to the board. That's what Chris said. If it dies in Plan Commission, it doesn't come here.
I, nope, we've had many things come before the board that, and I don't know if Plan Commission is different than other committees.
He directly told me that, about Plan Commission only.
Plan Commission is different than other committees.
So it might be, so that's just for Plan Commission, then?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Because I know, I know other commissions, we've had where we've voted no, but the whole, the whole board has voted differently when it came to that. Okay.
Interesting. I don't know why that is, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, we can go through that when we get there.
So you're good with everything being addressed there?
Yeah, that's fine.
Later on, that's all of it?
Yep.
Okay, super. All right, thank you. Let's move on to approval of the bills. So Lucy, we've got bills in what amount?
Yes, give me just a moment. We have the first run in the amount of $35,250.56. Second run in the amount of $1,332.20 for a total of $36,582.76.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the bills.
Blackwood will make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $36,582.76.
Trustee Hollenbeck will second. All right, does anyone have any questions about the bills?
Do you have highlights, anything over, I scanned briefly, I didn't see a whole lot, but.
So we have Dean, $6,279.52. Safe bill, $8,854.33, and GFL for $9,529.94.
All the safe bill stuff?
Mm-hmm.
I noticed it's all from July?
Yes.
Are these the last bills that we're getting from Safe Bill, then?
I can't confirm that. I can check if there's anything else outstanding. I do know that we are responsible to, you know, close out with what we have with them, and they are a little lagging in how they bill, so I want to make sure, because, so we ended with Safe Bill, I believe it was at July 31st.
Yeah.
And this was, you said this was July?
It says July 31st on all of these entries.
I would, I would much, I'd feel better if I confirmed that and sent it to the trustees, because I could say, we should be good, and then you'll.
No, that's, I mean, to your knowledge.
To my knowledge, yes.
This is, I mean, when you get new information, you have new information.
Yes.
That's cool.
Yes.
All right. Did you double-check to make sure they hadn't already billed us for all of these things?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Only because they all came through at once, they all have the same date, I just want to make sure we didn't already pay for some of them.
No.
All right. Anybody else have any questions about the bills?
Can you just remind me, there's a few that are overpayment, like return, is that from tax overpayment, or what is that on? There was a couple of individuals listed.
Like specific people?
Yes.
Those are court payments.
Oh, court payments.
Where they came through with our ACI, and they weren't for our jurisdiction.
Gotcha.
And so we can't stop it or reverse it once it's come through, and so we have to cut a check.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, then I've got a motion and a second to approve the bills. Roll call, please.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Trundle.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes. All right, so that carries. All right, so bills are going to be paid. So now we will move on to unfinished business, action, unfinished business. And we're starting out with the discussion and possible action on the 2025 Financial Management Plan Workshop Number Two. So we have two things that we'll be working on with ALERS. The first item is the workshop, and this is a continuation from our previous meeting.
Yes, so of the packets that I handed out, it's the bigger one that we'll start with first.
Will you guys introduce yourself for the record?
Certainly, and then also I'll just leave these for interested.
I can introduce myself while he's handing those out. My name is Caitlin Harrigan. I'm a fiscal consultant with ALERS, and I have been assisting Brian with preparing the financial management plan primarily, and reviewing some of your utility count information as well.
And then Brian Ramer, Senior Municipal Advisor with ALERS. I was here last time and many times before. So again, we'll start on the bigger packet. I think the goal for tonight is kind of cut into this chunk of material. I think a good cutoff would be the 17th page, so we'll kind of go for that, and then if we want to cut off sooner, just let me know. So, last time, we did review the historical perspective of where you've been with the operating debt service and any sort of capital levy that you've done before, kind of a history on tax bill impact, et cetera. We're now going to move this into the initial draft 2026 budget, and understandably, there might be, you know, other conversations that have happened just recently at the Audit and Finance Committee or other things like that which haven't been updated yet. So the point would be here at tonight, and then kind of talk globally what, you know, the board would like to see in terms of changes or goals, and then I can work with staff to achieve those for your next upcoming, you know, Audit and Finance Committee and then upcoming board meetings thereafter. So with that, jumping into Slide Three, the summary of levy need. So this is a comparison of your total levy divided or segregated kind of by the purposes. So the general fund takes a majority, library, and debt service. So there, the 2025 column is what you did last year for total levy at 1.8 million and change, and then the draft budget in 2026 shows the total levy need of just over 2 million. One thing there note is that debt service levy is subject to change pending the next agenda item, certainly, so we can kind of talk through that. But right now, kind of have an increase for the general fund's levy need of about 227,000, again, for the draft budget, and then 10,000 for the library fund. So that's just a comparison of the total levy change from last year to the draft budget this year. What we then do, understanding kind of how municipal budgeting works from the last workshop, we take your levy need, and we have to weigh that against your statutory allowable levy limits. So I'm now on the slide that reads allowable levy, and this is kind of a comparison of 2025 to 2026 draft budget, and then weighing that, you know, underneath that total levy need to your levy limits. So as we briefly spoke about levy limits last time, the formula is kind of what did we do last year, net of debt plus net new construction. That's what builds your base levy. And so, or what's also called pre-adjustment allowable levy. So if you lead your eyes on the chart where it says pre-adjustment allowable levy, last year, that amount was just over a million, a million 96,000. And then the pre-adjustment allowable levy this year due to net new construction for 2025, you get a boost, right, an additional percent there. So your pre-adjustment allowable levy or your base levy is 1.1 million, you know, 59. So a little bit of an increase there. And then in terms of what you can do kind of for your debt adjustment, right, you have a total claimable amount to your annual payment in debt. The one thing that we point out here is, right now, this draft budget basically is $31,000 over your allowable levy limits. So that would say you need to make some, you know, slight adjustments, you know, relative to 1.4 million between the general fund and the library fund. Somewhere there, we either need other non-levy revenue sources or expenditure cuts to get to the allowable levy, so.
You said 31,000?
31,033.
Oh, I see that.
Yeah, that number in the bottom, right?
Thank you.
Yep. So, that's kind of the biggest adjustment. So there, it's kind of, that's when, if you're taking, you know, either at a board meeting or an Audit and Finance Committee and kind of going line by line, that should be one of the first targets, is kind of, can we reduce expenditures or increase other non-levy revenues, you know, in those line items to kind of meet that goal? Obviously, you may have other goals as well, but this one is you have to meet, you have to get $31,000 less of a levy need, right? So then on the next page, this is the initial tax bill impact. The left-hand side is Dane County, the right-hand side is Jefferson County. Understand that you have a total levy that goes out, it's distributed amongst the counties based off of the equalized formula that the DOR use, and so they distribute that levy need to both counties, and then they're taxed on, right, their taxable value in the individual counties. So there, just to compare the two, for Dane County, from the '25 budget to the draft '26 budget, you're taxed, so if you were to look at your tax bill and find the Village of Cambridge line, that's all we're talking about here. Understand that the board does not control the county, the technical college, or the school district, so we're only talking about the Village of Cambridge column or line item on a tax bill. Last year, for a Dane County resident, that tax rate was $8.05. This, you know, for the draft budget, $8.90. The one caveat here, as stated at the bottom, this is based off of estimated assessed value. What's lovely is the Department of Revenue waits until November 1st to give you your final assessment information. We have a good estimate put in there in terms of, we know your preliminary statement of assessment, we kind of have seen the preliminary state manufacturing assessment, so we have a good handle, but it's not the final number, so I just want to caveat that as well as, right, you're going to obviously change your levy need slightly down by $31,000 to meet your levy limits. But right now, just kind of on a draft basis, that, you know, tax rate increases by about 85 cents. For a sample property, at about 232,500 in total property value, and again, that's an assessed property value, their tax bill would go from about $1,872.61 to $2,069.31, again, on the Dane County side here, or a tax bill change of about $196 for the year, and 10, 10 and 1/2% increase as compared to last year. For Jefferson County, right, and again, you don't really have control on how these are allocated, it's based off of an equalized value process, but then you're taxed on a tid out assessed value. The tax rate goes up similar to Dane County, not, you know, in the same pacing in terms of, you know, the cents is only a 51 cent tax rate increase, but then again, there, grabbing a sample property within Jefferson County, that tax bill changes from $2,025 to $2,148, or about $122 change, or a 6.1%. I would focus on, if you're kind of thinking about this holistically, specifically for the residential assessment class, the percentage is the more important number, because the dollar change is going to depend on how much taxable value an individual property has. The percentage, though, should remain relatively the same. If you built an addition on your house or something like that, where you now have more assessed value, that, of course, though, you could have a further increase. So there, just kind of understanding how that works, I would focus on the tax bill change delta, that percentage, instead of the dollar amount, because the dollar amount would be different across different assessment values.
Brian, I have a quick question.
Sure.
What, what does it tell you that our assessment ratio for both counties is pretty low?
Sure.
Is that, is that, for, to me, it's saying that we need a village-wide reassessment?
Sure.
Is that what I'm seeing?
Yep, generally, you're kind of forced into it. Once you get, you get kind of like a yellow warning, I would call it, once you're below 80%, and then there's like a red warning under 70%, they will kind of force it. So I don't think, you know, it's, I would say, yes, it's needed, to answer your question, but they'll start to, the DOR actually forces one, you know, under certain circumstances. All that means is, right now, the difference between assessed value to fair market value village-wide is, right, you're about 30% away from where the fair market values have gone, so. Any other questions on that? Okay. So just some assessments from, you know, our end of the table. The initial 2026 budget, and this is just a draft budget, so you do have an allowable levy increase of the 62,989, that's the difference in the base levy, is what that 62,989 references. You are short, you know, of the allowable levy still, though, of about 31,000. The draft budget levy need increase, net of debt, you know, so the general fund increase and the library fund did go up by about 237,000. We're still not levying for capital here. One thing to note is, you know, in terms of your expenditures, you did have a significant decrease in one expenditure line item, that did go down by about 207,845 as, as part of that Vineyards incentive payment. That was coming out of the general fund, and that's now gone away. So we did send the Excel spreadsheet with the line item budget to staff, so they do have that, that, you know, can augment your Audit and Finance Committee discussions, Village Board discussions, et cetera. And, right, the projected tax bill impact that we just showed was about 10% and 6%. So I think at this point, right, if there are any sort of Village Board input on, you know, tax rate or tax bill impacts that you'd like staff and others to work on, this is the time to kind of let us know. if you'd like to see any sort of different scenarios, things like that.
I can't think of any different scenario that would be, it's, yeah.
Okay.
It's really us sitting down and trying to go through the budget line items to make sure that matches.
Yep, understood. So then beyond the 2026 budget, this stuff I'll go a little quicker through because this is more of the bigger picture items for future planning, some financial stress tests, not intended for a hundred percent accuracy. It's, it's intended for a hundred percent messaging. So you understand kind of the one decision in one year can affect the next. So for here, some of our assumptions for revenues, we only assumed one percent net new construction. If you kind of remember from last time, you've been averaging about, you know, three percent. So we've kind of cut that in half in terms of allowable increase to the levy at one percent. Non-levy forecast, we've basically said all non-levy revenues are going to be flat. Now your state shared revenue and other things like that generally do go up. But again, some of the point of this is to stress test the future budgets to see when is there kind of a fiscal cliff? If, you know, things really get bad. And then for expenditures, you can kind of see the forecast use, we codify each line item. And you can see that in the Excel document that I sent staff that they can kind of work with. And obviously, you know, spit out into a PDF or however you, you know, start to choose to work with that in terms of the committee presentations or board presentations. So you could see individual line items and which ones are codified as such. But there for our forecasting, you can see we chose, you know, two percent, seven percent, et cetera. A lot of that was looking at the recent trends on where you've been and then some staff input as well, right? Just to kind of say what, what has been changing and where should we go with this? So again, kind of picking a linear forecast for 2027 budget and beyond. So then on the next page, that kind of allows us to build a levy need for 2027 through 2031 budgets. So you can kind of see how that increases over time. That'll, you know, that's kind of true of the general fund and the library fund. For debt service, right, we're just structuring on kind of the bigger picture. That'll be in some of the future slides here in about four or five slides. So the debt service levy is just meeting that, that levy need from your debt structure that we're recommending. The other point of that is remember that you are exempted from levy limits for debt payments. So you can claim whatever you need for that debt payment. Generally, that our goal is keep that level or decreasing, right? Primarily decreasing is advantageous. Specifically, if you have a capital improvement item, that kind of pops up out of the blue and now you need to go issue debt for that. It would be nice to have some capacity to add in a debt payment. So you'll kind of see that, you know, left to right here, that we stay at six thirty-nine, six forty-two and then go down from there. So. But beyond that, one thing of note, we kind of then weigh these levy needs against your levy limits. Also understanding we can claim what we need for debt service. We'll use the additional allowable debt service claim that we have available to us. We still have for the 2027 budget about a thirteen thousand dollar problem, similar to the thirty-one thousand dollar problem. So again, that's going to be a discussion for next year, but just understanding that there's still kind of a ways to go in terms of the allowable levy limits. And then the other element that can be troubling is in the future, as that trend kind of increases and the debt service drops off, we have less ability to claim debt, right? We don't want to just take out debt to pay operations either. But we have less of a claim for that. So that problem does grow in 2029. You can see that number, third number from the bottom is eighty-four, five forty-two. So that thirty-one thousand dollar problem, that's this year's draft budget in 2029 is an eighty-four thousand dollar problem. Then it's an eighty-nine thousand dollar problem, right? So it's kind of one of those where we need to start thinking about other non-levy revenue sources or
What's an example of that?
Like, one of the easiest ones that you kind of generally have, but it shouldn't be relied upon is interest earnings, right? So you have interest earnings on what you're holding at the bank. Another one would be permit fees. The utilities make a pilot payment, primarily the water utility makes a pilot payment to the general fund. That is actually has been frozen as part of the last water rate case, but that's a non-levy revenue source. And then like, I'd say kind of any police or court revenue, things like that, that go to the village and aren't passed through are some of them, dog licenses, I mean, go down your fee schedule, right? And those are generally your non-levy revenue sources that you're kind of working with. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Then on the next page, we get to the projected summary of the tax levy and rate. So here we show that levy just as previously shown on the last slide, but just kind of in a, you know, stacked column there. So that's your total levy need over time from 2025 through 2031. And then the tax rate for each county are your lines there. So we do show a revale happening for the 27 budget for 2026 values. Just understanding that you would dip below seventy percent. So that's why you do see the tax rate decline there in terms of going down to six dollars and sixty-four cents for both counties. The one thing I'll point out there is that doesn't automatically mean a tax bill decrease because everybody's assessment goes up. That's where you're getting the additional taxable value to have a lower tax rate. But because everybody's assessment goes up, the tax bill generally goes up even though you have a lower tax rate, even if you had a flat levy. A lot of that, we can kind of help show once you start doing a revale and we know that you're doing one. And we can kind of show that, but I kind of explained that in one community last week. They just went through a revale for their one-one-twenty-five values. They have a tax bill increase with their draft budget of eight percent. The revale was five percent of that, meaning if they just did a flat levy, everybody's, the residential class's tax bill is going to go up five percent even with a flat levy. They had their draft budget though with an slightly increased levy, that was the three percent of the eight percent. The revale was five percent. So just a little anecdotal evidence there. But, you know, if you're going through that process next year, you know, start to involve us, we can kind of show you how that looks. And a lot of the phenomenon is due to the residential class, right, assessment class has a lot of fair market appreciation right now because the housing market, since the last time you did a revale, everybody's home prices have skyrocketed fair market wise. You've been taxed on the same amount though since your last revale. So that's where it changes. Next page is expenditure restraint. The one thing that I'll say here is in terms of the worksheet this year and kind of projecting that out, we do kind of show a projected increase. This is one thing that we're going to kind of keep working through. I think there's some funky math going on with the filed worksheet and what should happen with this year's budget that might be helpful and something we can work with staff with the DOR directly to kind of see if we're eligible. Beyond that point, just generally the, the linear trend that we've been using, if we assumed CPI stays at what it has been for the last 12 months at two point seven percent, you'd just be over that qualification standard at three point four percent versus three point three. So this is something that we, you know, would intend to annually monitor at this point and kind of give specific guidance on each budget, like I'm kind of recommending that we'll just work with staff. Because there's kind of a weird, last year's worksheet was a little different and it's causing it to look like that increases sixteen percent when the expenditures didn't increase that much. So we're going to kind of work through that with staff and DOR directly and come back with more information at a later meeting on that.
I have a quick question on that.
Yeah.
So when I started, I was told that the expenditure, expenditure restraint qualification filing was not mandatory? That's true, correct?
You can not file it. I would recommend doing so though.
So I did, and if you skip a year, then you have to go back and do three years? So I just want the trustee to know that, to make sure that this always gets done because I had to go back and do three years worth.
Okay.
So just so you guys know, this is something that should be done even though it is not required.
Right. There, nobody's going to tell you, hey, you didn't file this.
Yes.
Yeah. But you should be, if you, even if you're not qualifying.
And that's why I was told like, oh, we don't have to do that. We never qualify.
Yeah, even if you're not qualifying and actually there's, if all other things remain true here, there's kind of a mechanic that we use when you don't qualify to promise future qualifications. There's like a contingency way to build a budget to kind of overshoot the expenses so that you qualify in future years. And it's a expenditure you're not going to expend. We build a line item that says contingency ERP. You do a revenue line item for revenue or for fund balance applied just for ERP. And this is like a budgeted expense that you're never going to expend. It's only for this qualification. So that we do a budget amendment for though, after you send out the tax bills because then nobody can say, well, you increase our budget, so you must be taxing more. The answer to that is no, right? You're doing that in March when this is due in May. So that's complicated item though.
Yeah.
All other things being equal, I would recommend doing.
Absolutely. And if it does get skipped, then you can't just, so let's say in 2026, it was not filled out. And in 2027, somebody who comes in and decides, oh, I'm going to do this, then they'll have to go back and do 2026 and 2027. Which is, it's a very, very simple worksheet, but then it, it just makes it, you know, more than twice the work.
Some years municipalities would forego doing it, knowing that they wouldn't be eligible for it anyway because they're purposely taking their expenditures that far. So that may be why they wouldn't have done it in the past. But you're right, they need that comparison data in order to really evaluate whether you're going to be eligible for the money.
And absolutely into plan for making improvements.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and filing it at minimum benefits you because you can then do it the next year. Otherwise, you're two years removed from a payment.
Right.
Yep. Okay, so that's on the budget. And then I just wanted to get through the capital items because that'll kind of help preface the next agenda item. So I'm on slide 12, which reads background current geo-debt. The one thing that this is doing is just showing your total geo-debt payments less the abatement sources, meaning we don't need levy because the water utility, the sewer utility and the tit are going to pay a portion of this debt. So in the middle column, you'll see your net tax levy. And then the most important column is the one to the right of it, which says debt service levy change from prior year. So what this is telling me is we have an opportunity, right, to structure in this debt that we're going to be talking about in the next agenda item so that we can have kind of that level debt service. So two hundred, negative two hundred thirty-four, nine fifty-two, you know, is debt service falling off. So you can kind of fill that back in specifically, right? Some of the items that you're looking to borrow for are reimbursed expenditures. And we want to amortize that as quickly as possible. So, and not have that debt outstanding for long, adding interest to it. So that's what I kind of wanted to get to, to just kind of preface the next discussion topic. But that's kind of your existing profile. There's other opportunities, as you can see within that column for future debt services as well. On the next page, this is an overview of your capital improvement plan. So there is a full project list, you know, line item list that you can review on your own time. But just looking at the sources of funding and then kind of by department, there's a pie chart that kind of shows how that's split up by department and then the sources of funding in terms of who's repaying it, you know, from cash or debt. So you can see for the most part, it's the levy and then the highest department here is public works, just as an example. Terms of capital needs and the financings on the next page, so this is slide 14 that reads capital needs. The 2025 taxable geo-note, which we'll talk in the next agenda item. And then we would recommend kind of issuing to preserve your fund balance. What's left is doing, if you are going to execute the other projects upcoming in 2026, looks, look for a tax exempt geo-note when you're ready and need funds for those projects. So those are the two financings in this plan. And then the next page kind of show how we would fit that debt service into this plan. So slide 15, the CIP financing plan tax impact. You can kind of see there that net debt service levy and then the levy change from prior year. We've been able to not increase your tax levy for debt with fitting in those two debt issuances is kind of the message there. So. Then if you're questioning, how much would that cost a sample taxpayer, you know, just for these projects? It's a thousand one hundred and one dollars, you know, over the, you know, about 10 years there. So. But again, the, the debt service portion of the tax bill will be decreasing because we're able to structure this in. And then the next page just kind of identifies your geo-debt capacity with doing the two issues. So the 2025 taxable notes that we'll talk about next, and then the 2026 notes. If you execute those projects and issue that debt, you'd still be able to fit it in within your general obligation debt limit, which is five percent of your total equalized value. That debt limit is shown in the blue section in the second column. And you can see where you stand with total debt outstanding today. So you're at eighteen percent of that limit. Adding the 2025 notes or the next agenda item, you go to twenty-two percent of that limit with a residual capacity of thirteen million. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on this, and we can stop for the FMP, is the next page. You know, just the assessment on the capital planning is you do have limited cash for capital projects. So the initial borrowing consideration was general obligation debt. At each financing execution, like the next agenda item, we'll talk about options. So just note this plan assumed for 2026 general obligation notes. But when we get to, you say, hey, Brian, now we have funding needs for these specific projects. We come to a village board meeting and talk about the options there for the plan. We've just chosen general obligation notes. So that's all I have on the FMP portion. And we can go to the next agenda item if you don't have any questions.
I actually have a quick question for you. Sarah and myself went to the levy workshop. And I know, and they did explain, and I asked a bunch of questions. But I do know that we, one of our very large expenses for, for the village is our fire and EMS service. And I do know that some communities will create, you know, put a certain amount as a special assessment on the tax roll. I do understand that affects our levy though, because it's going to decrease that. In some cases, the revenue, because of the increase in revenue, that it still makes it a positive plan. What are your thoughts on that? And then I haven't had time to dig, but the other area I wanted to look into was our garbage and recycling. I, I know we do get some aid, but we charge a hundred and twenty-six dollars a year on the tax roll. And as you saw our GFL, we pay over six thousand dollars a month. So I feel like I'm missing something because I think, I'm just trying to look at where there's gaps.
Sure. On the fire one, you can under statute impose a fee to cover fire protection services. It comes with some complications. You do have to take a negative levy adjustment for what you levied for that service in the 2024, or excuse me, 2014 budget. So if you do, you know, levy a charge for that, you just want to make sure you, you know, put yourself in a financially advantageous situation where you have more revenues than if you impose the fee that's under that budget amount and you have a bigger negative adjustment than your allowable levy increase, right? You can actually create an internal deficit.
Yes.
So it's kind of, you want to do like a specialized look if you're going to do that. One other unique thing that just came up, well, and in addition to that, where I live, I pay one of those. One other unique thing that just came up, um, well, and in addition to that, where I live, I pay one of those. Just FYI. I personally feel it's fair to do that, and I understand why, on, because if you're only able to increase by net new construction, but the fire department needs are more than that, right, you're outpacing your ability to collect revenues for it. I would prefer to have very well-staffed and, you know, good equipment to help take out a fire at my house, my neighbors' houses, et cetera. So just personally on the matter, like, when I pay that fee, and I understand it.
What is the fee, what do you pay?
Uh, it's by square footage, so.
Okay.
There's a.
Sorry, is that only fire service, or is it fire and EMS?
Fire and EMS where I live.
So it's both, okay, great, thank you.
So, um, you pay that by square footage, so they just take the square footage of improvements on your owned parcels, and then it's a fee, you know.
Okay.
Two bucks per square foot, or, you know, whatever it is. So you can figure it out that way. The one complication though is, not where I live, but in two other communities close by, there was a recent legal challenge on whether or not you can do it, because the statute is a little wonky, it's, it says towns can do this for services generally provided. Villages and cities can just impose a fee, so that it's kind of, they legally challenged, like, the connectivity, and then said, well, there's no, like, standard to how to charge it, and so therefore, it's like a tax. Um, so, uh, that's something you can look up online in terms of communities' challenge for the fire fees. But I would say, there's a few communities that I'm working with thinking about doing that, and I've kind of put brakes on. Just to say, let's see how this legal challenge goes for the other communities before we do a bunch of work, and pay people to do work, right? Um, to do that, if it's gonna be taken away legally. Or the, the way to solve it is actually easier, because the statute changes or something like that. So I would just say, something you can do, I would probably wait for that reason. Garbage and recycling, I almost didn't understand your question, are you saying you do charge a fee, not on the levy? And you just think that fee should increase, or you're charging it through the levy, and it's not able to increase?
So I'm not 100% if it's included in the levy, it's, it is on the, it's a special assessment on the tax roll.
Okay, so it's a special charge.
Yep, so it's a hundred and twenty-six dollars. And I've, I haven't spent a lot of time on it. Um, I did a really quick brief, and, um, you know, Matt, just a few minutes, and I.
The, the board knows that we are not charging what it is costing us, and that we are covering, at, at least past boards. Been aware of that when we've looked at that fee.
Okay.
So it may be something that this year again, we need to look at again, to say, do we need to increase that? Because how big is that difference?
Okay.
The, the, I mean, a couple of years ago, I think we were only charging like $95 a month, and so we raised it up.
A year, a year, it's a year.
I'm sorry, a year, right, and, and so we raised it up, knowing that, it still wasn't gonna be fully covering it.
Got it.
But we'd get more money, so that might be one of the fees that we can look at this year.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can add that to the next time we come, just to kind of isolate that item.
Can I just go back quick to?
Sure.
Back to slide number six, um, you had, uh, when we're talking about the initial budget assessment, you had asked for us to give you direction on either tax rate or tax bill goals. Do you have recommendations, suggestions, places that we should look at?
Where the village stands today, I don't know that there's much mobility outside of the discussions you will have on your line item, right? I, our role here, we don't say how much you should pay police officers, right? You know, so.
Right.
I would say, from that end, um, you may wanna have those discussions and kind of determine what your abilities are to cut. I think relative to the tax bill implications, that could be a discussion for kind of the next agenda item. One of the levers that we can pull is saying, you could amortize this 2025 taxable note over a less period of, or longer period of time, reducing your debt service levy, but it's kind of the argument of, you know, when we're paying reimbursed expenditures, including operations and capital, do we really wanna add interest costs to that over time? Or just flatten the tax, you know, like, we could actually flatten the tax bill increase, so you gotta, that's the seesaw, right? In terms of, um, you know, if you wanna see a lower tax ra- rate, and therefore bill increase, the one lever I can pull is amortizing the debt differently, that we'll talk about, you know, on the next slide, but.
But you feel really, just that line by line.
Right, the line by line, in terms of, yeah, if you feel there's certain cuts you can make, uh, and you're saying, hey, what does it take us to get to a 9% tax bill increase instead of a 10% for Dane County? I can come back, I can give that number to Lucy tomorrow, right? That's kind of some of the feedback, if you wanted to ask questions like that, um, that we could bring back, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else on workshop number two?
I have one more thing, Brian, sorry. So I will, we, the audit and finance committee, we will be going line by line later this month, um, to initial review. But as a finance expert, um, one of the things I noticed from the previous year's budget, and I just want, like, your feedback, is I think by, um, you know, we're talking about where, can we make cuts at 30,000, you know? Even initially looking, I, I, I don't personally see a whole lot of areas myself. Uh, and in the past years, the areas that were cut were detrimental to keep us on budget. So we can cut all we want and get it passed through, but is it sustainable to stay on that budget for 2025 without having liability issues? Um, and, and, and just operational issues, again, because we cannot predict what is going to happen in 2026, what might come at us. And, um, that's why just the planning and the looking forward even past 2026 is so important. And I just, your, your feedback on that, because I'm afraid we're gonna get into line by lines, and it is going to just, and I am going to have all my documentation of why we have to have a sidewalk replacement plan. Um, and have money budgeted for it, um, and have to, per our, our village ordinance, we have a statute that we, you know, are supposed to do so much of the, the sidewalks in the village every year. And so number one, we're not meeting that, number two, reliable, that's just one example. And so just, I guess, e- either Caitlin or Brian, your feedback on, we have, just being realistic about what we're putting, and not just cutting to make that, to, you know, make it get, go through.
Well, one, what, legally, right, you can't raise that levy any further.
Yes.
So they're, like, you gotta do something. Last year, part of it was to do a one-year note for all of the capital needs, right, so that you could levy for the payment. Um, so that, you know, there could be an opportunity there, but from what I understand, that we have in the plan, we're already kind of looking to do that. The, the fees are the simplest solution there, when the, the gap's pretty small, and then maybe minimal cuts beyond that point, right? If you can raise the non-levy revenue through the garbage and recycling fee, for example, make up $5,000 there. Now our difference is only 26,000, right? And then you make cuts elsewhere, look at the other non-lev, you know, the other fees, have you not raised permit fees or other things like that in the while? Um, that's what I would.
Absolutely, and just to let you know, I'm not sure if I sent it to you guys, um, I have been working for several months on the fee schedule for the village. Um, I've worked with MSA, um, I've researched other communities. Um, and that should be, um, ready to go, and hopefully be finalized that, at the next village board meeting. Um, but I'd love to send it to you guys too, just to, to take a look at it. Um, and every day, it seems there's an occurrence where there's a fee that I'm adding, because there's so many things that we haven't charged for, like land division permits, and just all sorts of. In the past, the village just paid those out of the general fund, um, but I'd love your feedback, and I can send that to you guys.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And if I could just, I'm a previous finance director by trade, so I feel like I just can't help myself sometimes. But I mean, after you do the line by line expenditures, and it's more of the direction, I feel like sometimes comes from what you all want to see in the government services that are being provided. Is the level of services that are being provided to you adequate according to like how the budget is laid out and what is currently being funded? And then you match the revenues to meet the expenses that you, and if it's the, it's the most extravagant level of expenses that you want, or the minimum level of expenses that you want, that's kind of a decision and direction that you give Lucy as a part of the budget process. And then from there, you structure the revenues to be able to meet that demand on a long-term basis. It's really kind of how I would always think about it, and you can forecast the revenues from what you have seen over the, and that's some of what we do at others as well. We try to forecast what has been happening over the previous five years, and then we look forward to see, okay, how can we continue to maintain and sustain the services that you as a board have decided that this is your expectation of the services that you want at your village and your community. So that's some of what will help Lucy to try to like, bring together ultimately, um, but that's a lot of it. And I've seen some municipalities that say, we don't want any increases in expenses from one year to the next. And you have to talk about, okay, if you don't want any increases in expenses, then that means cuts, or that means an additional revenue source. And you have to have realistic conversations about what that means, cuz that can sometimes be painful as well. So I think in terms of like, just direction, just trying to kind of be clear about formulating that direction to give Lucy in terms of what you want to see out of that budget for the following year. I think that going to the audit and finance committee is going to be really great and really helpful to do that.
Caitlin, did, did your bo- boards, when you were a finance director? Did they tell you, kind of give you an idea before you even started the line by line of what their goal and their vision was? Because I do, I mean, I was not here in the past, but I can only imagine putting in all this work and thoughtfully, you know, trying to back up each line item with my supporting documents, and then just have them absolutely wiped away, because, like, so that direction is extremely important, because a lot of work's put in there.
What we've done in the past, Lucy, is that we've asked our, our treasurer to just take a look at, like, the past three years, and what on average have we been spending on each one of these categories, and that's what we want you to budget, and that's what we always started with.
Okay.
And then when we did the line by line item, that's where we sort of talked about what our priorities are.
Okay.
Yes, we really want to make sure we have money for senior services. So if we wanna make sure we keep this $16,000 for senior services in the budget, where else can we cut back? That might not be quite as important. And so, so that's, in the past, that's the way that we handled it.
Got it.
One of the things that was brought up, um, during our fire and EMS commission, is there is debt associated with, um, the commission. There is a crew house that has a mortgage, there's an ambulance that has payments, things like that. Um, it was suggested that rather than keeping that debt at the commission level, that it should be transferred to the municipalities, because that can affect the debt, is there advantages, disadvantages?
Yeah, uh, one, you have a former finance director for a fire district sitting next to me. But also, uh, as the municipal, registered municipal advisor at this table, I'll, I'll have to answer that question. So it's, there's advantages and disadvantages, um, to it. Uh, if you have the authority to issue the debt as, you know, the, the joint district or entity, there's always an advantage there, because the municipality has other things to take care of, right? The, the, um, streets, you know, police equipment, et cetera. The disadvantage though, for the community's not issuing debt for that, is then they can't legally claim that for their own debt service levy, right?
Okay.
So if you're paying that out of your municipal charge to the commission, that, that causes your levy to be, that portion of that charge to be subject to net new construction, instead of an exempt, uh, levy limit line claim. Um, so there can be an advantage to doing it municipal, uh, you know, on each municipality. One thing I would question though is just like how the debt has been issued generally, joint fire districts on their own can't legally issue general obligation debt, so they may have commercial loans outstanding or something like that. Um, or revenue bonds, um, outstanding, so there's just, you know, I haven't seen those loans, but right, if I looked at them, right, I could have said, hey, these are the options you could have done back then, not to say would or should, could have, but just to explain it better, like, for what you actually have outstanding, might be more of a fruitful discussion on that item.
Okay.
So, and then you can add whatever you wanna add, I didn't wanna.
I was gonna let you take it, no matter, no, it's fine. Yeah, I can tell you, my experience with it is, we would generally, uh, one of the municipalities take out geo debt, because that was the most, um, low-cost debt, and then we would structure it so that we would all, the fire department would take in the payments from the individual municipalities for that debt service payment, and then we would then turn it over to the municipality that took out the debt. However, them doing that, that counted against how much they were allowed to take out in total geo, geo debt in their totality, cuz you're limited according to that 5% threshold that Brian went through earlier with you all, that, uh, so that is gonna count against that for that individual municipality that decides to do that, so.
Okay.
Uh, but then the, then essentially, that became a charge to the municipalities, and then they could use that adjustment I on the levy limit worksheet in order to exempt, um, the increases and the debt payments that they were paying for.
Can each municipality, cuz we pay different percentages, the four municipalities that are involved in it, can each municipality bar, take on that, that debt for their percentage only?
Yep.
Or is that way more complicated?
It's way more complicated, and like, you'd think about it, each municipality then probably has cost of issuance expenses. They're getting different rates, which also.
Yep.
Can cause some just weird conversations between the municipalities, like, how come Cambridge did better than, you know? Yeah, so things like that. Generally, from, uh, her district, you know, they, it was take turns, right, kind of a.
Ish, yes.
Yeah, so like, they would, but you do want some fairness when it comes to how much general obligation debt outstanding you have. So that approach achieves that goal, but right, causes other.
Causes other.
You know, there can be increased costs of issuance holistically, thinking that you're doing five issues instead of one.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, anything else on, um, item on workshop number two? If not, then we're gonna move on to, uh, 9B, which is discussion of possible action regarding the 2025 long-term financing proposal.
This is the smaller packet of the two that I handed out, that at the top on the front page says 2025 financing plan. So the first one, the kind of why we're here on this agenda item, uh, the village has unreimbursable, so a, a funding source not yet named for some, uh, operating expenses that happened and equipment purchases that happened totaling $700,000. Um, if you do borrow for operating expenses as general obligation debt, it does need to be taxable. The recommendation to issue a general obligation debt instead of a commercial loan is still the ability to levy for the payment, right? Uh, the other way to do it, right, is you could set up some sort of revenue bond, but what's the revenue source, right? So, um, general obligation debt, um, would be kind of the way, just preliminarily, we'll talk about the other, uh, options as we go, and then identify impacts. So on the next page, that is financing options, slide number three. Through an external lender as general obligation debt, we just kind of did go through this, but essentially, your debt limit is 16.7 million. You currently have 3.1 million outstanding, so you have a remaining capacity to take out 13.5 million in debt. That's not a goal, we should take out that, that's not a capacity. So we don't wanna hit our head on that ceiling, just, that's just to say, you can take out, $700,000 is not gonna impact this that much. You're gonna be fine within your statutory confines on general obligation debt capacity. Um, some of the options are local bank loan through an external lender, state trust fund loan program, or a municipal security. I'll get into that, of weighing those three options against each other shortly. The other one, not through an external. The other one, not through an external lender, we use ourselves as the bank. Now, while you could say there can be an advantage to that because we're not charging ourselves interest, one, there's probably an opportunity cost lost on that fund, holding funds and earning interest, right? So they probably should pay some sort of interest for it. The other thing is you can't levy for the payment back. So how are you going to repay that other pocket of government? You're robbing Peter to pay Paul, I think is how the phrase goes, I don't use that phrase too often. But if that was said correctly, that's what we kind of mean, you're taking from one pocket for the other. Um, so, and the inability to levy for it, I think would cause further kind of budget gaps for another fund that we don't want to do. Looking at the options in terms of state trust fund loan versus local banks. So on the next page, that also reads financing options, and this is slide four. The state trust fund loan rates are on the top right side there. You can see two years, 5%, 11 to 20 years, six and a quarter. So we had, um, the village send out a request to local banks. Um, basically said, hey, if you want to just start getting a response from them, let's start with the max term you can issue for. The reason for that is you can always negotiate after that point, but we just want to see kind of on a max term who, what kind of offers you get. And so it was asked to go get 20 years of $700,000 and you had three banks reply. Uh, Lucy, if you don't mind, correct me if I'm wrong, was it, were there any bank bids that I missed?
Nope.
There were three? Okay, I just want to make sure, because obviously we're, you're, I can't act as a, uh, um, like a dissemination agent there, receiving those bids. Um, so I just wanted to let you all know that Lucy would receive anything and those correspondence I was not a part of. And then I'm just taking her forwarded email and putting it on paper. Um, so here, uh, the bank first bid is 5.9% for 20 years fixed. Um, their fees were the highest at 2,400 and their all-in cost. So you, I add in their fees to their interest rates, so you kind of can take uh, the total all-in cost over that 20-year period was 6.3%. There is no prepayment penalty, meaning you could, you know, refund this anytime you wanted to without any penalty. Badger Bank was 6.65%. Little concerning there because one, it was only 10-year fixed. So they basically would say, we'll amortize this over 20 years, but in year 10, you get a balloon payment, you have to refinance this with us. And then we'll see where the interest rates are at that time. So kind of unfortunate, but just the other thing is obviously their 10-year rate is much higher than the state trust fund loan. Uh, fees were only $500, though, but all-in costs were the highest out of all three. There's again, no, no payment penalty. Bank of Deerfield, uh, did offer technically the lowest rate, but the problem there is it was only five-year fixed. So you'd have a balloon payment in year five and then have to refinance that to see where the interest rates are at that time. Um, and then their fees were 2,000, all-in costs were the lowest because the rate was low. Uh, but understand it was only locked for a certain period of time wherein the bank first was locked for the full period. The other concerning part of the Bank of Deerfield thing, and that, this, this is no comment on them, this is a comment on impacts to the village. Uh, it did require at least $100,000 of a deposit relationship. So you'd have to send funds from one of your fund balances to bank with them, uh, in order to get this loan, so. Uh, and then also they didn't actually submit a comment on if there would be a prepayment penalty or not. So, uh, all of those items considered, the one other thing would just be thinking about a municipal security for this transaction. Um, running that, the cost of issuance and all-in costs there start to get to about 7%, meaning if you were to go out to the open bond market and try to issue this, the cost to issue that debt was much higher than $2,400. Um, that's usually in the, uh, you know, 4% to 5% on par. And then there's just like a baseline cost, uh, to pay those entities to help you, including myself. So I'm telling you, don't use us to go out to the open market for such a small transaction. Um, that this can be done, uh, through one of these options, and then we'll talk about that. But just in terms of the option for municipal security, I would recommend not doing that. The next page, uh, just kind of highlighting all of that, you know, the Bank of Deerfield lowest AIC, but however, there's one, only a rate lock for five years and no, or and the deposit relationship is a deterrent. Um, we do think the opportunity to negotiate the rate down with, uh, Bank First might achieve all goals, right? You kind of solve the other problems, uh, there, as Bank First kind of had, they followed the request in terms of a fixed rate for 20 years. Uh, and then you could ask to structure the debt within your existing debt profile so that we don't have to go out 20 years. So I'll get to that on the next slide. The next slide is your existing debt restructure, or debt structure. This is the exact slide, though, that I showed during the FMP. So that, that middle column where you see the negative 234, that's what I'm talking about, is why don't we not structure this for 20 years, try to fit in what we can? Now, again, the seesaw of that is your tax rate will kind of remain the same for debt service, right? And then you have the increasing portions of the tax levy for general fund and library fund. But that said, given the, what we're financing here, doesn't have a useful life really beyond a year for those operating expenses. And then, uh, for a couple of years for the capital needs, or the equipment needs, I should say, you know, I don't think 20 years is a good idea. Um, and we should try to amortize this as quickly as possible, absent any board, you know, input on, you know, relief on the tax, you know, the tax bill impact for debt service only. So then on the next page, uh, just kind of provided a structure to you. And I split it between the equipment and the operating portion intentionally, and then have holistic principle built out. Um, but this is what I would recommend if you wanted to structure this as fast as possible and pay it off as fast as possible. And paying off the operating portion for first. So that's what I've done here while maintaining a flat debt service levy. So having the same levy as what you did last year for debt and just kind of structuring that in. Um, so the operating portion, right, would have the 190,000 of principal year one, 203 year two, and then 86,000 to pay off the total amount for the operating. And then you'd kind of switch to the equipment and having that paid off in five years, because just looking at the equipment you were financing, you may need to replace that in year six to 10, it kind of looked like, just based off of the equipment you were financing there. So figured we could amortize that. And, uh, you can see how that structure then looks in putting that into your existing debt profile. So I just focus your eyes about two-thirds of the way to the right, where you see the column that says levy change from prior year. You still have a drop of about 27,000, um, in 2027 and beyond. So I, I had a flat impact to year one, which was 2026, so that's a zero change, as you kind of saw on the previous presentation. And then still allowing for debt service to drop off, though, for future projects as well, right? Because we talked about that 2026 issuance, uh, and then you may have capital needs beyond that. So kind of the point here was you'd really start to decrease that debt service levy. You know, 2028, 2029, you have another big drop-off. So if you needed to issue debt in 2028 for something, you could fit that in, is kind of the point here. Um, and then of course, beyond that, you've already amortized this debt, uh, beyond 2030, so your structure kind of remains the same. Then the one other important point on this slide was, if you look at the bottom right, the total cost to a sample taxpayer to pay this is $246.59 over those five years. So, uh, about on average, right, $50 or so a year. Uh, so moving forward on the next slide, the, um, recommendation would be, you know, I'd reach out at minimum to Bank First, uh, just kind of looking at the various, uh, items that they put into their bid, or all three, to renegotiate a couple of things. One, structured payments over five years, no deposit relationship, and ensuring that these are taxable notes. And I would say you have, there's no issues, you're not committed to any of them, so I don't see a problem with sending it to all three. Uh, just to see if, you know, Bank of Deerfield, for example, will say, okay, we don't need the deposit relationship. But most of the times when they do that, they kind of do need that. I haven't seen a lot of banks, uh, not, you know, take that away and be okay with that, but maybe they will be. Um, but if you just want to, basically, my recommendation would be for you guys to make a motion or however you want to do it to kind of tell staff to go with this plan or ask questions and do something different, so.
All right, I'm going to make a motion, uh, to, uh, direct staff to, uh, move forward with, uh, loan from Bank First and work on renegotiating and structuring it over five years. Yeah, I'll go with that. Trust you, Hallenbeck, to that.
Blackwood will second.
So now we can discuss. Can you remind me, I know a big portion of the operating expenses is Fire and EMS stuff that we have to cover this year. What equipment, what were the capital things that this was going to cover? This loan, Lucy, do you remember?
Oh, yes, give me just a second.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, this was the, um, computer.
Oh, the computers?
All the computer, uh, equipment. Um, this included an, actually, I need to find my spreadsheet. Um, there's one piece that we're not moving forward with, and that is the $200,000.
For the snowplow.
For the snowplow. But I was not told to adjust the amount at all when I went out to the bid from the trustee, so that is why it stayed at 700,000. Um, so while renegotiating, um, we, we can decrease that. We had the payout for the former administrator for retirement, vacation, um, and vacation. And Fire and EMS, and then let me just see if there's anything else that I'm missing. I feel like I'm missing one thing.
Yeah, there was, in the equipment, there's, I thought it was three things, and then you removed the one.
For?
I'd have to find your sheet that you're looking for as well.
We talked about not taking the snowplow that we ordered, but we also talked about looking at something that was on the lot. Are we still looking at replacing the plow this, within this next year or no?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. I mean, we have, no, we have three snowplows.
Right.
Two of them are in decent working condition.
Right.
So the third one is if we want three snowplows out at a time.
Gotcha.
It is going to take some work to get it, or it's there for, if one of the other ones break down.
Okay, okay. I know there was some discussion.
I do know the newest plow was just in the shop for a few weeks. Here we go, here's borrowing items.
Yeah, it says Lakeside International chassis and Madison truck equipment.
Yeah, that's the two parts of the snowplow.
Two parts of this, got it, okay.
Okay.
Uh, yep, so Fire and EMS Commission, oh darn it, it just closed. Fired EMS Commission, um, the former employee payout, and then, uh, computer magic.
So taking out the snowplow costs would bring the loan down to what?
So the snowplow was, hang on, let me.
It'd be about 577,000, about, yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe less.
Actually, less than that, because I got computer magic to come down 5,000 by going off of the server. So we have 47, 900 for the employee. We have Fire and EMS Commission. And we budgeted 200,000, oh goodness, I gotta do my. 591, 552, minus 200,000. So 390,552 dollars are for Fire and EMS Commission. And 15,815 dollars and nine cents are for our computer upgrades. And then we have 47,900 for the former employees. So I have the total, 454, 267,09.
Can you repeat that one more time, 454, 267?
454, 267,09.
And, and Brian, do we need to be exact on when we take that loan?
Um, I mean, you can request whatever, right? But you'd probably want something to also cover the bank fee.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so can we round up, you know, by a little bit to cover some of the other costs that are going to be associated with?
I would say round up, you know, like $15,000 was generally what I've been telling Lucy.
454, 267,09, hang on, I, um, Kristin, that final number's higher because there's two separate line items for the vacation payout.
Oh, yeah.
Another 9,520 plus 2,299.20. So 465, 571.
So we were looking at $480,000 if we wanted to add.
Yep.
So I think that would give us a buffer that we might need. So $480,000 is what we're looking at. Would we still, if we're, if we're lowering the amount of loan we're taking, would we still amortize it over the five years or?
I could take these, like, if you're okay with slide eight, uh, structure.
Yep.
All you're doing is kind of lowering the payments, and we probably could cut off one of those.
One of those years.
At minimum, I mean, maybe it's more. But I would, if you are okay with the negative numbers in that levy change from prior year, that's enough direction for me to know what I can restructure and do and, you know, so I, it fits in with the future plan as well. So I would say that would be a good target for me to hit to restructure this.
Yeah, I think that's what we would look to do since it's.
The shorter the better.
Yeah, and, and, and it's, and it's, you know, 220,000, it's a third less than what we were originally going to ask for, so.
You're paying off the, um, the equipment's a lot less. Um, so it's probably just a matter of you can, if there's an opportunity, pay off the operating portion quicker if there is, yeah. That's all it really means.
Excellent. And then by doing this, this essentially flush it, puts the, the budget at a, at a flat.
25 budget.
25 budget, so, so that way when we start our budget for 2026, we are not budgeting in the negative already. We are starting at a, at a even rate, okay.
And then we still have, if I'm looking at this correctly, we have 3.2 million of other outstanding debt?
The existing debt that's outstanding, yeah, yep. We did look at refunding opportunities as well. Anytime you're asking to go out to debt, we do that. And then on a quarterly basis, we'll look at, you know, refunding opportunities if any exist. Um, there, none of those were at a interest rate that's higher than where the market is now. Um, a lot of that is because you issued debt when the rates were pretty low, like in the twos and threes, so. But yes, you do still have 3.1 million, that's all, that is part of this presentation as well in terms of your current debt profile.
And is any of that debt, um, in, in this presentation, water, sewer, or storm?
A portion of water and sewer paid the GEO debt. Uh, any revenue issues haven't been discussed on, on this, any, so your clean, or excuse me, safe drinking water fund loan for the well, that's paid by the water utility and through the TIDS, that isn't in this.
That's not included.
Because it's revenue debt, it's not general obligation debt, yeah, so. It would make my presentation unimportantly longer.
Okay, so we, so, uh, Okay, so we, so we have a motion in a second to direct staff to go to bank first and look at renegotiating. We have a new dollar amount that we would have staff include in that, work with ailers for whatever calculation stuff they need to do there. So, so Lucy, question for you. We're directing you to go out and get information. Are we, would we then, once you have that final information, would still come back to us and we do a final motion to actually get the loan?
One thing I'd recommend is, the clock's kind of ticking in terms of your.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, so I would say, if you're making the motion to go out and get this loan kind of as presented.
Yep.
We're, as long as those terms are met, and you're working with just bank first, right, then they can send you the resolution to adopt at the, I would say, first November meeting.
Right, which they do want a resolution, they emailed this afternoon stating it has to be in a resolution form, yep.
Perfect.
So.
Okay.
But yeah, like, if that's the direction, is kind of like as presented, that gives me enough to let Lucy know how to talk to the bank, and then get that in motion instead of having to accept bids, so.
Because that was my intent in that motion?
Yep.
I just wasn't, I just wanted to verify that that was okay.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Paula, can you also add to your motion to, with the updated amount of 465, would we make the amount 480,000?
We want it 480,000.
With the updated amount of 480,000?
I can, let me amend my motion to include the updated amount of 480,000.
And Kristen, you seconded that?
Yes, I did.
All right, any other discussion on this?
I just don't know how we can keep taking out money. We're 3.2 million in the hole, we did 200,000 last year. Well, 3.2 million in debt.
We have to take debt when we build this building, we have to take debt. When you build.
Then we're doing too many things.
No, you're not, I mean, you can't buy a house without taking debt on, right?
But we just keep on taking more debt.
But this, that's what the village does over time, it's, we are not, we are not all over indebted, indebted, over indebtedness. Have, we don't have a problem with over indebtedness, we don't.
I disagree.
Well, I mean.
I disagree.
I don't know, Brian, can you speak to other municipalities?
Yeah, if you go to the general obligation debt capacity, which was on the bigger packet, so that was slide 16. The majority of communities that we work with are, 40% or higher, and I'm talking 90% of the communities we work with have doubled their limit. Capacity rate is based off of size, so I would say I do focus on kind of the capacity more. I wouldn't be recommending doing any more projects than what's kind of in this plan in terms of, you know, the 1.7 between 25 and 26, now that will be 1.48, you know, the 480 instead of the 700,000. So you're, that's going to be impacted less, and you're still not going to be at even a quarter of that limit. Quite frankly, communities, one can't raise the cash necessary to finance projects because of levy limits, the other, and, and it's legislature-driven, because they allow you to exempt any debt payment you want up to infinity on an annual basis, so you could structure it and have your tax rates go on a roller coaster, right, in terms of saying, well, we need a million dollar project, let's take a million dollar note out. Legally, you can go do that, you could take a 13 million dollar note out and increase your levy by 13 million dollars next year. That's the rules. Not set up very well, but that's the rules. But in terms of levy limits, you're not able to increase your revenues enough to hold a bunch of cash and then pay cash for it. The other thing is thinking about generational equity, and the best way that I explain this is, another community I work in, my grandparents lived there for a long period of time. I don't know that if you use cash, right, you're kind of saying, my grandparents, who are now deceased, have paid for this road that they will not use, right? So it's kind of managing, you don't want to have too much cash, you also don't want to have too much debt, but the point is, it's impot- it's nearly impossible for communities to raise a lot of cash via levy limits in addition to just the tax bill impact, right, your governance over it to say, I don't want to increase the taxes, I don't want to increase the taxes, you're not going to be able to increase cash either to pay for it. So it is managing it, in my assessment and my experience, and then just from the firm's experience, you know, serving about 200 of the Wisconsin municipalities, this is a pretty healthy general obligation debt position. The need to issue debt for operations, I 100% agree, is not ideal, but that's just a fact of the budgeting situation that you found yourself in for 2025. This is the only tool you have in your toolbox to pay for those items and not be literally indebted to a bank, because you do not have any cash.
And, and part of the reason we're in, part of the reason all that money we had in reserves isn't in the reserves anymore, is because we weren't taking out debt for capital expenditures.
Yep.
We were paying it out of the money that we had in reserves. And had we not done that over the last six, seven years, we would still have that bucket of money in our reserves that we don't have today, because we weren't being, because the board makeup at the time didn't want to take on any more debt. And, and I think, I think we need to be smarter about that and understand that debt itself is not a bad thing. And because of our restrictions, as Brian has said repeatedly, of the levy limits and what we are restricted to, in order to provide the services that the citizens of Cambridge want and need, it's something we have to do.
I very much disagree that debt is not a bad thing. I think that's wrong with, what's wrong with our, excuse me, our entire country, that we are so far in debt, nobody seems to care that we're never going to pay it off, and I feel like we're doing that to our village.
So what are, what's your idea? So this is a tool, the toolbox, what are your tools?
I don't have the tools yet, because I don't, I don't have the information in front of me, I don't have a budget in front of me.
And a financial advisor to assist us? They're not, they are not telling us what to do, they do not make money off of whatever decisions we make.
I understand.
They're trying to give us our options, but if we don't have any other options, and we're paying others to assist us, and you're like, I don't want to take any more debt, what are your options? What are your alternatives to get us through 2025? Because we're going to be in the red soon.
I think we're going to be in the red every single year. That's, I don't know how we get out of this situation if we just every year keep taking on more debt. We haven't discussed that.
That is how many municipalities run.
To keep digging the hole deeper, but no, no.
I mean, in a sense, they don't really dig it deeper, what happens is.
Taking out loan after loan after loan is digging it deeper.
No, it's not, because you've paid off some loans, this is what he was talking about, leaving, having the debt level be level, having the level of debt being level, it's because every year we're paying off some debt, and then, so the key is.
And then taking out more.
But, so we're not going more into debt than we already are, we're just keeping that debt level even, so I just wanted to make that clarification.
Is that correct?
Yeah, and it's decreasing. That was the slide that I showed that had all the negative numbers, levy change from prior year, you're amortizing it each year, and the debt payment's lower. In terms of the CIP that I have today now, right, you, I would say, the bigger recommendation here is, you need to build like a more robust CIP so you can understand what your future needs are, and then you get an all-in picture and say whether or not we want to issue debt for these, because those are the conversations where it's like, we shouldn't be issuing debt for this. This, you're literally, like, you don't have any more cash to pay for these things. Now you have a chance, going through this process with the 2026 budget, that Audit and Finance Committee, and then the Village Board, when you adopt the budget, to understand that if you're setting an expectation that your staff can't meet, then you've caused that operational deficit. We're saying you're, right now, there's a $31,000 problem that needs to be fixed. That, that was a lot worse last year, when I didn't have all this information in front of me, I was just kind of presented with, here's our issue, and so that's where it's like, we didn't have a lever to pull at that time, and there was a one-year note taken out, but now that one-year note's not in existence anymore, it's paid off. It's paid off in February.
So that $31,000, that, that can include fire and EMS, is it?
It includes everything.
Yeah, it does.
That it, for 2026 or 2025?
2026.
But we don't know what number he used for that, if he used the 2024 number, which is what got us in trouble today, this year, and we're hoping, that's why we're not approving the current budget, because it can't be the same as what we're paying this year. I'm guessing it, the number that you gave others for the fire and EMS was the same number as what we paid last year.
I didn't give them any number, because we haven't had an approved budget for 2026.
Or for, so I don't, yeah.
So, okay, but so then it must be more than 31,000, because that doesn't make sense to me.
And this is where we need to take a look at what the budgets look like, but.
And the 31,000 is just what needs us to get us to that levy limit, that is separate from, that's, those are cuts we have to make regardless, so.
And the next year with fire and EMS, then we're going to be, we're going to be in a hole even more.
We will be, if we take this loan, and we will be flush, we will, we will not be in debt, so we will be able to better budget for those future items. We don't know what those costs are going to be yet for fire and EMS, because we've talked about different services and looking at things like that. So this is not, this, this loan is for today. This is not for 2026, this is not for 2028. It's to, because of the fact that we, I say we as a board, but it was past board decisions, chose not to borrow. In some cases, that ultimately came back to be detrimental for us. Is that accurate?
Yeah, and just to talk about like the cash reserves that you were just referencing before, there are like government finance officer associations, like nationwide standards of what you should keep your fund, your cash reserve levels at for each one of your funds. So if you've depleted them to such an extent that you can't cover one-time anticipated expenses, as it sounds like some of what you're running into for 2025, then you're kind of in this position where you have to borrow, so funds on hand is kind of a necessary thing to cover, so there's, there's more going on here, and things that might more be warranted to look into to build some of that back up, so you're not continuously having to borrow in this type of a situation, so that doesn't happen on an annual basis.
All right, any further discussion? If not, I have a motion in a second for staff to go out and work with back, bank first, for a 480,000 dollar loan for the Village of Cambridge. Let's do a roll call, please.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Schultz.
No.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Trando.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
All right, so motion carries, all right, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much for all your work.
You all have a wonderful weekend.
All right. Which then is going to move us on into new business. Is there anyone here in, who is just waiting on a new business item to discuss, because I know we have a couple things, all right, and which item are you waiting on?
I think the conditional permit for 403.
403, okay, I would like to make, Hollenbeck will make a motion to move item 10F up to current discussion.
Schultz will second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're going to have you come up so that you can, just so you can get out of here, if you don't have to wait for the whole rest of the meeting, because we've got a lot of other things to discuss too, so.
Great.
All right, so we have an item discussion of possible action on the conditional use permit for 403 England Street.
That's right.
Do you want to talk to us about what you're doing?
Well, first, my name is Wency Melendez, I'm the owner of Amigo Construction, and this year I started a business called CCI, it's Comprehensive Cladding Innovators, and what we do are structural components, wood components, floor trusses, roof trusses for residential and commercial homes, residential homes and commercial buildings. And I'm using the 403 building to do so.
Okay, and Sarah, did this come before planning commission last night?
Yes, it did, yes.
And what did planning commission say?
We recommended approving the rezone, sorry, did I state that correctly, right? Okay.
No.
Condition, excuse me, yes, there were a lot of things on the, I'm sorry.
That's language that gets confusing.
Yes, yeah, that was our recommendation after discussion.
To approve it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, were there any conditions, because I thought with the, isn't there something MSA wrote up on it, and they said there were some considerations that we should take?
We did just.
One were the hours.
Yes.
So they wanted to make sure that we were not working past nine o'clock, which I, all the times that I've been in business, I've never worked past five o'clock, so.
But originally, the proposal said 11:00 PM, and so we discussed that it should be consistent with all the other businesses at 9:00 PM.
And I think lighting, just some, not making sure that it wasn't too bright, I think, at nighttime.
Yeah, there's, and the fencing.
Yeah, we have temporary fencing for now.
Because you're going up against a residential, making sure you're in compliance with that.
So the fencing that we put up is on the west elevation, so it's facing the grocery store. What we do have on the south is some trees.
I can see, I can see from, I can see from the picture that MSA included in their recommendation, with the tree line that you're talking about, okay. And then putting up signage to make sure that the entrance off England Street and the entrance off of.
There's only one.
Oh, there's only one?
Yeah.
Okay, because I thought there was going to be one for deliveries and one for the showroom that you were looking at having?
Yeah, for employees and also for a showroom, yeah. So there is an entrance on the, on the north end, and that's, we'll have signage for that, and then there's also one for deliveries on the bank.
Okay, yeah, so it looks like there's two entrances on England.
Yeah, that's correct.
Into, okay, so signage on that was another thing that they had talked about, and then, let's see, fence entrances, that was it, maintained year-round, and then the permit applies only to you and will not apply if you no longer occupy the property.
Sounds right.
Okay, all right, so I guess I'll entertain a motion.
Blackwood will make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for light manufacturing and retail at, it's 403 England, correct? Okay, for 403 England Street.
Schultz will second.
All right, do we have any more discussion on this?
To revise that and put to include MSA's recommendations?
Oh, I thought those were, I'm sorry, I thought those were included in here. Were they not?
That's from MSA's staff report?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so to approve the conditional use permit for light manufacturing and retail sales at 403 England Street per.
With.
To include. To include MSA's recommendations.
And did you get a copy of those recommendations?
I did not.
Okay, so.
I'll make sure I get that to you.
Yeah, can you make sure that gets to you?
Yep.
Yeah, and I don't, anything, it doesn't sound, I mean, we basically talked about all of them just now, so I think you should be okay with those. All right, okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve with the recommendations.
Yep, who seconded?
I did.
Okay, any further discussion?
Is there a reason why MSA did not get the?
Is there a reason why MSA did not get the? Uh, to the, to the business owner, the, their recommendations or?
Because he, MSA is working for the village, so he would give the recommendations to us.
Okay.
They're for plan commission.
Yeah, they were for plan commission, yeah.
Gotcha.
So that they could make their recommendation.
Okay.
And then once that's, yeah, and then, and then once they're done. I'm, I'm assuming somebody at the, you were at the plan commission last night?
Yeah, I was here.
Did they talk about these recommendations last night, plan commission too?
Okay.
So this isn't the first.
Okay, I was like, I just, I mean, it seemed odd that this would be the first time that, that, you know, we're, we're voting on something to approve that he's never seen before.
Exactly.
Heard before, so, okay, sorry.
All right, um, so I've got a motion and a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, motion carries.
Right on, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm excited about the showroom.
All right, all right, so you have something on the agenda?
I'm allowed to speak to item E perhaps, which is our church.
Oh.
Go to the bathroom, go to the restroom.
Yeah, go ahead.
Two minutes.
Yep. And, yes, you are here to speak to, uh, okay, I will make a, Hollenbeck. Trustee Hollenbeck will make a motion to move item 10E, uh, the possible, uh, for rezone on 313 East Main Street up to current discussion.
Uh, Blackwood will second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so if you want to come on up, we'll wait just a moment for Sharon to come back. But if you want to sit down and introduce yourself, that would be great.
I'm Melanie Rumpf. I live in the village and I'm here representing Oakland Cambridge Presbyterian Church. And I can wait for Sharon to return.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Sometimes these meetings get a little long.
Few minutes away from two hours.
There's church.
What page is it?
13 East Main.
I saw it last night, of course.
110, I think. Oh, wait, a little bit before that. Sorry.
Sorry.
Pockets are over 100 pages long, I guess. Okay, cheaper gets way back. Aha, 101 is where it starts.
Thank you. There we go, I saw this all last night, but I don't want to say it again.
I know, I was, as I was reading through it, I was getting, getting lost.
Page 115 is, uh, the most recent staff report because we had to, we had to go backwards after our first one, so I'd go to 115.
All right, Sharon's making her in, so if you want to go ahead.
Okay, um, our church has owned the house adjacent to it for, it was, we looked back since 18, I think, 97. And, uh, it used to be that thought of as the parsonage. We had the minister living there. And that has not been the case for over 20 years. So we're, um, wanting to sell that house with the property next to it, and it was spun off as a separate lot. And, um, it was, um, the plan commission was in favor of it. But we were told that a zoning change was required because not all of the property was zoned the same. So last night at the plan commission, it was, they voted in favor of that change taking place so that we could go ahead and, and sell the house.
So the certified survey map has already been approved?
And? That has, um, it was a conditional approval based on, um, approval of the rezone.
The rezone, okay, great. I, just trying to understand what we're doing here. All right, um, does anyone want to make a motion?
Depends on the language. Blackwood will make a motion for rezoning. Do I have to list off the partial parcels? Is it 313?
East Main.
East Main, okay, um, to be rezoned for, uh, residential load den, residential load density, residential.
From RL to RM.
RL to RM, there you go.
There you go.
All right, from RL to RM.
Anyone like to second that?
Schultz will second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
Splitting it off is a good thing. All right, um, all right, uh, if there's no more discussion, then, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, thank you so much. Okay, and now we will go back to the top of my, of 10, and we'll go to 10A. Discussion of possible action on approval of street use permit for Halloween parade.
Sorry, trying to get back to that.
And this is, this is the, every year they have, want to do the little, I think it's just the third or fourth year that they've been doing it. And, um, so Erica Lean has applied for this, uh, street use permit.
Where do they have?
Downtown and around the park.
Um, actually, there's over 20 stops on the road. Um, they meet in Veterans Park, so this is a park, uh, a park, uh, reservation permit application. The village, uh, staff members will be participating this year as a stop. Uh, we are taking donations for candy and anyone that would like to assist with this, um, with, with our stop or hand out candy is welcome. Um, it is October 23rd from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And just a note, we have moved Audit and Finance Committee meeting back from 6:30 PM to 7:00 PM. Um, so that staff can enjoy in this community event.
All right.
Can you tell me the time again, please?
5:30 PM to 7:00 PM. The library is also a stop. Um, so we do expect a decent amount of kids to, um, to come. And this is also promoting small businesses because kids bring their adults and they'll be going into many of the participating businesses on Main Street. And so we, our staff have picked a theme and are participating, and, um, this is just the per, you know, the.
Per permit.
Per, permit part, but I just wanted to share that because I, I thought that was a great way for us to, um, get, get involved.
Lucy, this is my donation for candy.
I was like, wait.
Thank you very much, Trustee Hollenbeck.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Yep, you're welcome. All right, um, so we've got a motion and a second to approve. Any more discussion?
I don't think we did do a motion.
Oh, we didn't do a motion.
We got ahead of ourselves on this one here.
All right, we did, all right. Who wants to make a motion then?
Okay, I hope everybody will get sick of my voice, but Blackwood will make a motion to approve the permit, uh, the street use permit application for October 23rd. For Erica Lean for the Halloween parade.
Jacobson will second that motion.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Now we have a motion and a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, we go to 10B. Discussion of possible action on the extraterritorial CSM town of Oakland, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Lots eight and nine and part of 10 in, on block five in the Sylvan, Sylvan Mounds.
That's a mouthful. We, um, voted last night unanimously to recommend approving this. It's not in our jurisdiction anyway, so it doesn't really affect us, so it's pretty much just a formality, so.
Usually with the CSMs, that's what happens.
Yep, yep. I was really confused why we even had to address it last night. It didn't, but I guess that's how these things work.
It's an extraterritorial, there, that's just like a requirement. I think it's, they want surrounding municipality to be aware.
Which I guess is a good thing, but.
Okay, there we are, okay.
Okay, anyways.
All right, anybody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the extraterritorial CSM in the town of Oakland, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Lots eight and nine and part of lot 10, block five of Sylvan Mounds.
Trustee Hollenbeck will second. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, uh, the next item, 10C. Discussion of possible action reviewing village hall board meetings and committee meetings schedule. I'm gonna suggest, so I'll let Lucy talk about what this is about so you guys understand. But I'm thinking we don't take any action on this tonight because number one, I think all of the board should be here if we're gonna be making this kind of change. And, um, I think there's probably some discussion and thought that if this is the first people are hearing about it, that they're gonna wanna, um, think so we can have a good discussion about it. Okay, so Lucy, do you want to, or do you want me, I can explain because I had talked to you earlier.
Yeah, I, let me take the lead on this. So first of all, I apologize if the calendar, the showing November. Anybody made anyone think that this was going to be in effect November. I had, uh, asked our clerk, um, she made a nice list of, uh, just like an example schedule, and I wanted a visual. Just so you could see, like, uh, we're trying to spread things out. And for me, I'm a visual person, so a list doesn't, doesn't show me anything. What hap- how, where this came about, and I, I, I believe, uh, President Bruning and myself, I don't know who brought it up. But we're talking about, um, meeting consolidation and just, uh, a more efficient way of doing things. I shared with him that at the Fall League of Municipalities Conference, that was a question I asked. And ev- and in many sessions and in the roundtables and many municipalities, much, much larger than us. Um, one specifically that I picked their brain was the city of Nina, which is in the Fox Valley. And I want to say population of, well over 20,000, but I could be wrong. And, um, they had shared with me, um, that they combined committees. Had us, like, nev- did not move those dates. If there were no agenda items, then they would, you know, cancel for that month if not needed. Everything went to committee before it went to the board, so their board meetings were very quick. There was a lot less discussion. They, Audit and Finance and Personnel, and then I did kind of a poll, um, in Roundtable. Audit and Finance and Personnel, numerous communities have those combined. And then Water and Sewer and Public Works was also a very large, uh, one, committees that were combined. And then we're one of the very, very few communities under 5,000 that meets as a village board more than once a month. One of my first questions was, well, how do you, you know, do you pay your, you know, pay the, you know, do the check runs? Some of the suggestions were they, they did checks runs weekly, then they sent them out to their trustees with the JOT form. Gave them three to four days to review, fill out the JOT form with their approval. They had that, that time as well to reach out with questions on certain, um, on certain, uh, items. And then we'd also have like this, um, available in the village hall if any trustee wanted to come and go through the actual invoices themselves. And, uh, look at the information. Even with our two village board meetings, we're, we're constantly fighting, uh, due dates. Because this, we could have, uh, you know, entered things today and the bill, the mail came this afternoon, and now that's due in a week. So this, that, that whole idea is a lot, um, it would be a lot better because.
But that idea, whether we go down to one meeting or stay at two meetings, I, I think that's not a bad idea.
Yes, yes, um, so that's kind of where this was born. I think that when I first started, I had asked, uh, the staff, why, you know, why do you guys meet twice a month? That was a, a surprise to me, and I was told, well, we have to or, you know, in order to pay the bills. That was like the number one thing, was to make sure we get the, the, you know, the check runs, uh, approved by the trustees. So there's an alternative to that. I think putting more focus on the committees, uh, and, you know, really doing the due diligence. And then the other trustees that are on that committee, having, you know, trust built. Not that you can't answer, ask questions and stuff when it's finally brought to the full board. But it really should be just a matter of housekeeping and, um, and so that the, the board meetings themselves are more of just going through the process versus.
So I have just a couple of questions.
Yes.
First of all, joint law enforcement does not meet monthly. We meet every two months. So, and, and that's a set date, that's.
Yes, so, no, um, so for joint law enforcement, I also do, um, I ha- I have a draft. I was, um, so joint law enforcement is the second Tuesday of, uh, every other month.
Every other month.
That's, that's an air, um, but I was going to reach out with the Deerfield Village President. Because I would like to see if we could get that to quarterly instead of every other month. I don't think it's necessary, um, to have it six times a year. The, the main times, and again, there can always be an additional meeting if needed or if there's concerns. And I, that's not a decision we can make on our own. We'll have to work with Deerfield. And then, uh, what else was I gonna say?
I would almost suggest every three months, not.
So you're meeting four times a quarter.
That'd be quarterly, that'd be quarterly.
You're right, it is, oh my lord, okay, never mind.
You're on swing shift now, so it's understandable.
I don't know where I am, okay, sorry, yes, okay, great. And then just because we're going into budget time, um, when, uh, Village President Bruning and myself had talked about this. He also thought not only for, um, the, the, the time and efficiency of all of our committees and our village board meetings. That because we have budget restraints and are looking at areas to save, um, this would be, uh, it's a savings. Because, um, by combining two of the committees, and again, uh, this is your decision to make. And if you have ideas for combining other things or getting rid of certain committees or whatever it is. That, this is just a starting discussion point, but, um, the per diem, that, that adds up.
Sure, so I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
If we combine our, then we would change the makeup, right? Because if we combine Audit and Finance and Personnel Committee, it would still only be three board members.
So, no, this is, no, this is, well, and again, this is for you guys to decide as the board. Uh, my thought is, it is very difficult, well, okay. It's a little difficult to have a committee with three members. Because you need at least two to have a quorum. If Audit and Finance and Personnel were combined, that would, with our current committees, it would be five members, nine cracklos on both of them.
But how, how does that go though with then having a quorum for the village board every time you have, uh, Audit and Finance and Personnel meeting?
And that was a question that I had too, and, and kind of piggybacking off of that is, how do you set agenda? Like, do you, do you have, it, it's confusing to me how you, like, how you, I can understand Water, Sewer, Public Works.
Nope, I can't.
No?
Because Water and Sewer is paid for by ratepayers. Public Works is taxpayers. So where the money comes from each of them are two indi- we have two different focuses. And Water and Sewer has three citizen members. We don't need citizen members on Public Works.
Right, so I think you're right. I think this is a good, it's, it's good to have an understanding of where the concept is coming from. But I do think having all seven of us, it would be wise. Just like you said, to look at maybe some different combinations of, of things like that. My, my only concern with Audit and Finance and Personnel is, um, you could have a 10-hour meeting. My only concern with audit and finance and personnel is you could have a 10-hour meeting because the, you know, when you're in budget cycles and things along those lines, those audit and finance meetings can take lengthy, lengthy times. And, you know, in meetings like we've had so far with personnel, you know, you're looking at, we're looking at redoing policies and procedures and hiring and reviews and all that kind of stuff, and I feel like those two don't really...
What about personnel and public works?
That always seems like it coincides.
So, to me, I, yeah, I think personnel and public work would go, would be a more, would make more sense to me than water and sewer and public works. Again, I just, I just have the thing about water and sewer because number one, it has, it has citizen members on it, and number two, it's, it's not taxpayer dollars, it's ratepayers. So the source of where that funding comes from, I think, is different. The other thing about public works is we don't have a standing meeting for public works. Public works meets when there are things to discuss. And I think for the first part of this year, we didn't meet.
No, I actually went back and tracked the last four years, and the very, the highest amount of meetings for public works was four. The average was two to three in a year.
I think the last time we met public works was when we were doing budget, which would have been the fall of last year.
And that's kind of the same thing with personnel, that's an ad hoc meeting. Personnel in and of itself has no, the personnel committee has no directive of what you're supposed to do, period. You only work at the direction of what the village board has asked the personnel committee to do. So the personnel committee doesn't do reviews, Lucy does reviews.
No, 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 I understand.
The personnel committee doesn't, the personnel committee doesn't, doesn't determine policy for staff members, Lucy as administrator does. That's her job, is to manage and to control the employees. It is the board's job to set forth the policies Lucy needs to follow and to establish, and to establish the employee handbook, as directed because the personnel committee this year was directed by the board to do that.
So that's the only, what is the purpose of having a personnel committee, if that's the only two, two things that, I mean, then everything should be done at the board?
That's a great question, yep.
I mean, we could say that about a lot of these committees, you know?
But I mean, if you look at, if you look at our ordinances that talk about personnel committee, and I only know this because I used to be the head of the personnel committee, and we had an issue, and I was talking to the lawyer, and the lawyer said, based on your ordinances, you can't be doing what you're doing right now, the board needs to be doing that because, because you don't, the personnel committee doesn't have that authority unless the board has granted it to you. So...
Interesting. I think we should wait until the next meeting and put it on the next agenda personally.
Yeah, I agree.
There's too much to...
Yep, too many, too many questions.
So, do I need to make a motion table it, or we'll just bring it up the next meeting?
No action tonight.
No action on this tonight?
No action. And like I said, I do apologize if the November threw, might have thrown some people off.
It threw me off because I called Lucy and said, oh my god, Lucy, I can't run both public works and water and sewer at 6:30 because I'm the chair of both of those. How do you do that? And she's like, oh, no, no, Paula, that is not what this meant.
I'm so sorry, that was just a visual, and in hindsight, I should have had taken the month off, and it was just to give a visual.
No, all good.
Yeah.
All good. All right, so we will move on then to item 10D, thank you. Discussion...
Yeah, no, no, you go ahead, I did some research during, I did some research since we've started the meeting.
Discussion on Possible Action Approving Resolution 2025-05 Regarding the Vacating and Discontinuance of a Portion of the Lucille Circle Right-of-Way.
So that was you, right, Sarah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. Do you want to go ahead, or do you want me to go first?
All I was going to state is, I know that the Plan Commission did not recommend, or did you make a motion to not recommend? Okay, so they made a motion to not recommend this to the village board?
Yep.
And Paula, one of your questions was, can we still discuss it if, if Plan Commission? So I looked up our ordinance, and I looked up the state statutes, and I could not find anything. Plan Commission is an advisory commission.
And you don't have to go with what they advise?
From my understanding, from what, since I, since I've started and in other municipalities, that if it didn't, if it wasn't recommended from, from Plan Commission, it never moved forward, but there, I can't find anything stating, stating it.
Yeah, I did a Google search too.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, I did a search too.
Did you find anything?
And, and what it, what it said is, in the state of Wisconsin, you can disregard what the advisory board tells you, and the board can...
I'm just, I'm just telling you what Chris told me. He specifically told me that if it does not pass Plan Commission, it doesn't come from the board. But he specifically told me that.
Well, Chris has no more power than any of the rest of us from the board.
That's fine, that's fine.
I think that would be helpful to have clarification because again, and it goes back to me, and then why do we have such an advisory board?
What's the point?
What's the point of having it?
Because you have advisory boards all the time, but we don't have to follow, here's my concern. I watched the planning commission last night, and they don't have all the information.
But then that's the problem.
But they did have the information, they must have forgot it. Sarah, you wouldn't have because you wouldn't have been in the closed session where it was discussing what we were doing with it. But, but I thought Brian was, and so it's, it's, so I was just going to talk about, you know, additional information.
I guess my suggestion would be to take it back then with the full, full information to the Plan Commission and let them...
But it's a timing issue too. Because, don't you remember in closed session when we talked to, you don't remember the closed session?
I remember the closed session, while I remember multiple discussions on this in various ways.
I think one thing that's really important about this, which I think was a nuance that might have been lost in this meeting when I was, at this meeting last night, I think the nuance is lost, and it says it right here, a portion of the Lucille Circle.
I don't think it said a portion in our, well, it could be wrong.
Okay. Because that, so, because, because the only thing they want to discontinue, and the only thing we want to abandon, it isn't the road off of 134, it's not the two entrances into the development. Those are going to stay, as is the bike path going to stay. The only thing that's going to go is the, the only thing we're looking to vacate is the big round circle at the very end, so that when we have a developer that might be interested in that area, they've got that additional space because that's going to be really important in order for us to be able to build something on that that is going to give us tax revenue.
I don't think we clearly understood that then.
Okay.
And Jean was at the meeting to assess with that as well.
Last night's meeting? See, and that to me is problematic, if, if the information is not getting to the committee that is working on it, how can they make an accurate recommendation?
Okay. Unfortunately, Dean wasn't able to be there last night because they've, they've had this conversation before, and my husband's on the Plan Commission, and, I mean, we had this conversation, I could swear Brian was in on that closed session with us when we talked about it.
It very well, I believe he was, yeah.
So it's just unfortunate that the people who had the information weren't able to be at the meeting.
Why didn't we have the full information?
Well, and that's where I'm going, that's problematic to me.
Well, I mean, the whole, the whole Plan Commission should have had the full information.
Okay, let me, let me look at what was in the, let me look at what's in the packet.
I had no idea about a plan for a business going in there.
There is not a set plan for a business at this time.
Looking at, just future developments.
In order to have the option to have a developer come in and use that, they'd need a, this portion of land, otherwise it's not enough space to be built above.
Which that point makes sense, but if we're going to use an advisory board for potential recommendations, we have to have, that board has to have the accurate and updated information.
So I think they probably do, it's just difficult to read because it's the legal description and not, and not, like...
The resolution was included in the packet as well.
I mean, because it's called the, you know, part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter and part of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 1, Tom Tuvok.
I wonder why we didn't understand it.
Exactly, so I think it's in there, it's just, it's just difficult to understand if someone isn't, isn't there to sort of explain what the conversation is.
I would like to point out that we had probably maybe 12 residents that live over there that voiced their concerns about safety and deliveries and not having maintenance to that road.
No, there would be maintenance to that road.
We did not, we did not understand that at all.
And the two ingresses and egresses for those two condominium areas, that's not going away, it's just that circle at the end.
I only had the information that they had.
Yep, I hear you.
You know, so...
So it's unfortunate. So I don't know if we want to take action on it tonight now that we have that information?
From what I could find, there's no reason that we can't.
Then I'm going to make a motion to approve...
Can I, okay, I'll wait till you do it.
So if we're going to discuss it further, Paula can second it, and then it doesn't, we don't have to...
I'm going to make a motion to approve the Resolution 2025-05 Regarding the Vacating and Discontinuance of a Portion of the Lucille Circle Right-of-Way.
For conversation purposes, I will second.
Where is it written that the road that residents were concerned about, where is it written that that will still be maintained, will still be plowed, and will still be taken care of by the village?
This is where I wish Jane was here tonight because I would ask her if that legal description is what I'm talking about or not, because if it's, because again, it's just a portion of. So the portion we're not vacating, we still have to take care of. So I'll tell you that...
Well, she didn't make that, she did not state that at all.
Dean actually said she tried to at the beginning, but it sort of, nobody really heard her, and I didn't watch that portion of it, but Dean did, he said she was trying to make that point, and it just sort of went off from there.
Because that totally changes what we're talking about here.
And again, it's a portion of, so the portion that remains, we're still responsible for, we still have to take care of it. It's just that one portion that we're looking to vacate.
And we can prove we have clear documentation of which portion we're talking about as opposed to which portion we are remaining as a serviceable road.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable, I'm not comfortable without seeing all of that documented.
That's what the legal description is.
But saying a portion does not specify, a portion of this, a portion of that does not specify.
The legal description gives this, the like, specific, my gosh, what do you call it, like on a map, the longitude, latitude?
I'm not sure why Jane wouldn't have made that clear in all of our discussion about it, and with all of the residents making comments specifically about that. She said nothing, I don't, I feel like that should have been said straight to the residents.
But Jane doesn't talk to the residents, Jane talks to the boards, to the boards. It's not her responsibility to educate residents, and Jane's really usually pretty careful about that, that her job is to speak to the board members when they ask her the questions, and not necessarily to, so if no one asked her the question, I would guess that's probably why she didn't...
Well, then we, I mean, we did not have all of that information, and I personally do not feel comfortable voting on it without specifically seeing that.
But if you look at the resolution, the resolution says, a portion of, B says, "A portion of the Lucille Circle depicted in Exhibit A and legally described in Exhibit B can be accessed only by private roads and provides no exclusive access to the property." That the portion as described in A and B be discontinued because its continued maintenance by the village serves no public purpose.
So when we look at this map, which is page 99, and we see where it, at the top there, it says section, center, section one, whatever, they have that section on the right where it shows like two breaks in the, is that meant to be the ingresses into that condominium? Because that's really not clear. It shows the condominium name over there, but is that...
Why would have all of those residents, why did they even get that idea that that road would not be maintained?
Because they're reading it the same way you guys read it last night, that all of Lucille Circle was going away, and the whole road is called Lucille Circle. So they read it the same way you guys read it last night.
Okay.
So, and that's understandable that they, that they would read it that way, unless someone has explained it. Now, someone sent me a letter, and, and I responded back to that citizen saying, no, we're not, we're not, you know, the road is going to still be there, the two ingresses are still going to be there, we're just doing the circle part is what we're talking about there, vacating, so. Well, I have a, I have a motion in a second, everybody can vote however they want. Because I don't think further discussion is going to change you guys' minds.
No, I mean, I, I was a part of the discussion, so I have a good understanding of what we're talking about, and, and what bothers me though is the fact that we have an advisory board that is meant to do the legwork on these things and bring these recommendations back, and they do not have the accurate information to be able to do so.
And, and that's, 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 okay, so the key with that is that there were things we can't share with them because it was done in closed session.
Then how can we vote?
Because you don't need to know who the developer is, you don't need to know what a developer is talking about putting in there. All you need to know about is, is so what we need to go back and verify from Jane is that what we're vacating is what I'm saying, and it's not all of the road, and it's not the ingresses and egresses for those two roads.
That needs to be very clear.
It's just a circle. So I think we just need to go back to Jane and get that clarified, and then you guys have the information you need.
So can we make an amendment to your motion that includes clarification on the ingress and egress portion of the road and...
Let me make it, let me amend my motion to say, I make a motion to approve this resolution after we get confirmation, if it's legal, then that, the portion we are vacating is the top circle, and not the road in from 134, or the road that is adjacent to, the portion of the road adjacent to the two ingresses for condominiums.
I would keep my second to that then.
Okay.
Yes, because that makes it clearer, I think, for the residents to...
Oh, no, no, yeah, absolutely, and that's when, when, yeah, when the person wrote to me, I wrote back to them right away, and said, hey, no, no, that's not what we want to do, but we want to, we won't take away your exits, even though, even though they're private roads, we're not going to take it away. Even though, even though they're private roads, we're not going to take it away. So.
So we're voting on something that, I don't know how I can vote on something that I'm not clear about.
So what the motion is, is that we're going to approve, we're going to approve vacating that portion of the road. That is the top circle. No, we're going to approve this resolution after we get confirmation from legal. That it is defined how we are thinking it's defined.
That's true, that contingency.
Yeah, there's a contingency. We do that, we do that contingencies with, with motions. So it's to say, and the contingency is, they're still going to be able to use it off 134 and the two entrances and exits are going to stay there. We are not vacating that part.
They'll be plowed and made.
Correct. We are not vacating that part. We're only vacating that upper circle.
If legal would come back and say, nope, you were not understanding it correctly or something along those lines. That would, our motion would, that would.
Then it wouldn't be this way.
So it's purely contingent, our vote and passing of the resolution is purely contingent on that clarification from legal.
So this, this is the portion that is, it's not even a circle. It's whatever.
It's a portion of the circle.
Yeah. I drove it, I drove it before I came here. And you two kind of drive around in a circle.
Okay.
But you're right. It's this portion of the.
It includes the circle.
Here because, yeah.
Like this is all grass and wheat.
It includes that, that paved circle, but it's really that drying like that.
Oh, it's up here. Okay.
It's that circle there.
Like if you have a resolution for this, we're approving this resolution.
Correct.
No, the resolution was just for the initiating of the right-of-way discontinuance. So the motion should actually.
No, my motion was to approve resolution 2025-05.
But if, if I, um, just to, if our resolution was to initiate the right-of-way, do we need a different resolution to actually?
No, initiating the right-of-way discontinuance is, is how it needs to be written legally. Because Jane told us, there's all of these steps that we have to go through in order to do this. And that, and that's just the legalese that you have to use for.
Absolutely. Perfect. Thank you. And so this was started with Sarah also before, before my time as well. So that's why I showed Chris because I thought I'd be in a minute last night and I didn't feel comfortable answering any questions because the new process going forward.
Hold a minute.
Working with.
I'm completely, this is completely wrong. This is already, this resolution has already been approved.
Yeah, because it's initiating the right-of-way.
So, yeah. So what we're, so what we're doing, and, and we've held the public hearing. So now we're doing, because we're approving.
So when was this resolution approved?
May, May 27th of 2020.
Oh, it was May 2nd. Okay. I'm so confused. So what is the vote on then?
So it was always part of the plan, like Jane said, that we had to do the proper processes and have a public hearing. This was just to get it started.
Okay.
Is the public hearing? Sorry, it was the public hearing.
Last night.
Oh, last night.
Yep. Before the plan commission. So now that it's, that public hearing was held, now can you vote to approve it? Okay, so I am, I withdraw my previous motion.
Let's, let's do this over.
I make a motion to approve the vaca, the vacation, the vacation of the portion of Lucille Circle.
Do we have to do it right as the, as it's written? Do we have to do it how it's written?
Is there, are the motions written somewhere?
No.
No. I'm just, I'm just looking at where it says discussion and possible actions. Sorry to interrupt you. If that might help you.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, sure. Yeah. So, see, yeah, this wasn't, this was written wrong.
Wrong. That's what I was trying to understand.
So, uh, I'll make a, what did I say so far?
To approve the vacation of the portion of Lucille Circle after we get confirmation from legal, that the portion of vacation is.
Vacating.
Vacating.
The portion we're vacating.
Is the top of the circle.
And does not include.
And does not include egress.
Ingress and egress to.
Ingress and egress.
To the condominium.
To the condominium.
Or the connection to 134.
Or connection to 134.
There we are. No, that's it.
And do we need the contingency?
Pardon me?
Do we need the contingency?
That's contingency. Yeah, she, she, she read that on the condition of, I think she read it in there.
There's a lot of words there. That's why I was just trying to, trying to, okay. I'll, I'll second it again.
All right. Any further discussion? Is everybody clear on what we're voting on?
I am. I'm just like not comfortable with it.
You can either know or you, or you can abstain because sometimes people abstain if they don't feel like they have enough information, but they don't want to, or take a stand one way or the other. So. All right. Um, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no.
No.
Anyone abstain? All right. And then the ayes have it. So can you reach out to Jane on this one as soon as possible, Lucy? And if I need to explain to Jane, just have her give me a call.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. All right. So that took care of D. We already did E. We already did F. Now we're going on to G. Discussion of Policy Action on Highway PQ Bridge Project Nominal Offer. I wasn't exactly sure what we, what, because there aren't any, were there people's names in these offers? Because I didn't quite see that. Or were these just templates for offers?
So there's three slices of properties. And basically, this I was not part of from the beginning. So I'm still getting up to speed on this Highway PQ Bridge project.
Just so the note, nobody has been. Lucy never shared any of the PQ stuff with us.
Okay. So basically, in order for the bridge update to happen, we have to purchase three, three slivers of property because they need more land. One of the properties is owned by the Village of Cambridge. One is owned by Dean County, I believe.
The county, the county.
And then the third one is by, um, just a private person. Thank you. So what they had said is they are to, to donate. I think what was recommended is for our, for the villages parcel was to donate it.
$1. $1 and other good valuable consideration for the purpose of temporary pedestrian stewardship and trail grading. Page 130.
I'm confused. If we own it, why do we have to buy it?
Because we're granting the easement, no, we're granting a limited easement. These are all easements. These are all listed temporary easements. We aren't buying anybody's properties. We're just saying, while we rebuild this bridge, we have to use your property. You are going to be inconvenienced. And, and we may take out some of your shrubbery. You may.
And I didn't even understand it.
You may have, there may need to be some reseeding. So it's understanding that's what this is because not purchasing property, just doing easements.
No, that makes more sense.
And paying for damage, basically.
Got it, got it.
Part of that must be Dean Company Park.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can't block trade. Yeah, yeah.
And so the really fun thing about this, it's not our, the villages, this is not the villages' project. This is the colonies' project. But in, for all of that, we had to pay MSA to do all of this real estate work because that's just per state statutes, you know, what has to be done. And it's, it's a lot of, a lot of work has been, been put into this by MSA, the Department of Transportation, the DNR. It's, yes.
So, so, but again, what I'm, what I'm confused in, Lucy, and I'm not sure if we can do anything with these today.
Yes.
Because there's nobody, there's nobody, well, through property address 300 West Water Street. Tenant, if any, but we don't know who the tenant is. So there's no tenant in that one?
Well, because.
Own the Village of Cambridge for that one. Okay. All right. And the other, the other description, this one's also the Village of Cambridge. This one, also the Village of Cambridge. This one.
No, they're not all Village of Cambridge. I know that.
The only ones that are included in the pack are all Village of Cambridge. The letter talks about a different temporary easement that would cost, that the villages pose paying $3,000.
Yes, and that's a separate agenda item. So we're, we're only on G right now. So for H, is that payment.
Yeah, you got to, you got to work on the pack in the right order. Because we're confused. It's not, it's not in the right order.
H is the payment request for the $400.
Okay, that's the last thing in the, in the pack.
Yes.
Okay. So we, we need to go backwards with those?
No.
So the nominal offer is the letter, right? What is the letter?
The nominal offer is what's, it's, it's this.
The nominal offer is the three documents related to the Village of Cambridge.
Yes.
So Cambridge say for a dollar, they can go ahead and use our part of property.
Yes. And then for H is the project payment request.
Okay.
And that is the last document in the.
And that's MSA wanting to pay us, us paying MSA for that.
This is, no, this is for check payable to England Street Properties for $400. That's the next agenda item.
So can you explain the, the MSA letter that's in here? What that's, is that pertaining to any of the parcels that we're talking about here? It is page 127.
Yes. No, I'm here. So this. We basically need to sign off on this. And this is a waiver of appraisal, appraisal, recommendation and approval. If you're on 129, that we have to sign up. And then the temporary limited easement. And yes, you guys are, wait, these are for the village, for the village owned.
Oh, so, so what they're saying is, in a normal situation, that compensation summary is what we would give. But, but because the village owns it and the village is going to use it, you want to do this donation and waiver it instead and provide the, provide the temporary limited easement and say that we don't have any consideration. Okay. That makes sense to me now.
Yeah.
So that letter corresponds with the next three documents.
Yes.
And it's four documents.
Everything, every.
That letter corresponds with up to the page that has the right of land owner under the Wisconsin eminent domain. And all this has to do with a piece of property that is owned by the Village of Cambridge. But because it's a pretty county. It's a state highway? It's a county highway and it's county project. It's, we have to jump through all of these. Paperwork and hoops in order to just say, yes, we have to go ahead and do what we need to do. And take our grass back. It makes our grass back. We'll take.
It was making $3,000.
So we don't, the, the eminent domain portion of this isn't really pertinent because we're not invoking eminent domain?
No, like what we do next if they didn't, if someone didn't agree to allow us to use their property. Like, you know what, Lucy, I, I don't think we're ready to, so we have to do this today.
We can bring it up, we can have it on the next meeting. I know that they are waiting for this to move forward.
That's great, but we don't know what we're voting on.
I don't understand at all.
It's not clear.
Sure.
And MSA needs to come and explain it to me. And, and I think throwing this off is that first letter. And say, the letter, because with, if it was just, it's the three, it says four, three documents about the Village of Cambridge stuff, I get it. But, but it, but it actually says, you know, that table. That we're going to make you an offer of $3,000 for the parcel. Well, who's making that offer? Going to MSA is making an offer to the Village of Cambridge?
That's what I'm not understanding is, is because there's the $400 payments, there's the, not the $400 payment. There's the, you know, the, the three parcels that are listed with, you know, or payment value on it. And so what is the nominal?
I, I think that's where I'm getting confused. I don't know what the nominal offer applies to.
The nominal offer applies to the, the property that we don't own.
Which property is that? That's what's, that's what we don't know. And who is that person? That's not written in here, Lucy. Are you talking about 300 West Water Street? That's the park.
No.
But that's the side park. Lucy, in all of this documentation, that's the only address that's being referenced.
Okay, gotcha.
I just Googled, it's West, it's West Side Park.
So I meant, I meant the payment request. It's for, the payment request of $400 that they want us to cover a check for. That is for the parcel that we do not own.
That 217 West Main, that's page 137.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So what is, so, so that's a separate thing, which is, okay. But what is the nominal offer? What is G pertaining to, or letter G pertaining to?
My understanding from what I was told is basically they had to do a real estate evaluation to tell us what, if it was owned by anybody else, like what the value is. I don't know if that would necessarily be the same, like check of funds that we have to pay like for the property that we don't own. But this is just part of the process. They have to do a full assessment and evaluation and we have to sign off on it. I know that's not like.
No, and, and I think we're, and maybe I'm just tired and not comprehending, but you have one document that says, we believe the inquisition from your property is minor condominium plus and wish to extend to you an offer of $3,000 for this parcel. Can we move on to the last page where you were offering $400 for?
No, nope. The $400 is totally separate thing. We're related to this at all.
We got to pay that.
The $400.
Lucy, yeah. Forget the whole $400. That's a whole other different agenda item. Okay, we'll get to the $400 in a minute. I'll leave this up.
Okay.
So the first letter is a fourth letter that MSA, if they were doing this first project for anyone else and they had any other property, this is the kind of thing that they would send. So the property that is going to be affected, the bridge, is in West Side Park. The property is for 1,748 square feet that they need to have a temporary easement on in order to be able to do the work. Now. have a temporary easement on in order to be able to do the work. Now, the cost for us for that, or what they're offering in order to be able to do that, is $3,000 for that. So basically, Village of Cambridge is offering Village of Cambridge $3,000 to have this temporary easement.
I know, it's confusing.
However, if you read underneath it, it is our understanding that the village may wish to donate the interest needed for this project, which is what we wanted to do. And now it says, so please, if that's our intent, review and sign next three documents, which is the donation of waiver, the temporary limited easement, and the statement to the construction engineer. So what we're looking for today is approval to sign those four documents.
And we wonder why we make bad decisions, because when it's confusing, like, this one's.
It would have been nice if MSA had come here to tell us what it was, but then we'd have to pay MSA.
Right, but even, I mean, even just over to an explanation of, you know, and I can't fault Lucy, because she wasn't involved in even this, you know, when, when this all started. But.
And I have had, I have had a dinner conversation with Peter, my, my speaker, so I'm norming person, Tansville, Peter Pino. He's, like, helped me get to the point where I'm at, but no, it obviously is not a perfect understanding, but I have not, because like I said, everything was in the works. And Peter informed me, and Jacob said, he informed me in what I understood of it, because it was so technical. It was like, this is just part of the process. And then, so this week, and I had, I didn't, it was a limited temporary easement. I just thought that they needed to purchase the sliver. So there was a disconnect there on my part. Not to say that MSA was giving me the kind of wrong information. I interpreted it differently, because this was all very new to me.
It's just very frustrating, because none of us are engineers. So we're sitting here trying to, to read through the information, and it's, we're being explained not well. So, but, okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve signing the documents related to the H, the Highway PQ Bridge Project nominal offer, which will allow a temporary easement for the PQ Bridge.
And we're not spending $3,000.
The cost, $1 to the village.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Donation. Don't even make it a dollar, because it's going to be an accounting nightmare for me.
Well, okay.
Did it to a dollar?
It says in that document.
A dollar. Sorry. I thought it just said donate.
Oh, yes, maybe it's a donation of a dollar.
Does a dollar in there? I'm just, like, thinking a dollar's going to.
I was going to say, I'm.
I'll give it to you. Training balance. Okay. All right.
I have a motion in a second. More discussion on this. Now, I think we've figured out what it is that they want.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess it's kind of money, so can I have a roll?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Staying.
Hallback.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes. Thank you.
I don't think I could have. I cannot vote on something I don't understand.
That's what I think. Okay, well, there's the.
Well, you just want to borrow the land for a while. So now we're on to item H, which is discussion impossible action regarding Highway PQ Bridge Project payment request, which in this is MSA has done some work on the bridge project, and they're looking for us to pay them on the work they've done on the bridge project.
No.
What this is, this is too specific land.
Yes. So this is to compensate England Street Property LLC, $400.
There it is. Yep.
$400.
For the temporary easement.
Yeah, okay. So where the Village of Cambridge donated it, and getting a dollar, this person is going to get $400.
And Village of Cambridge has to pay that.
Is that it? Okay.
Where did that amount come from?
To get a whole real estate appraisal and assessment in order to come up with that value of this limited temporary easement.
Blackwood make a motion to approve the payment request for the 217 Main Street, the 721 square foot temporary limited easement.
You have to say.
Of $400. Sorry. Yes, I should say that of $400.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I will second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, then, it's money, so.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Hallback. Jacobson.
Yes. Okay, excellent. All right, so that one passes. Item I, discussion possible action on park reservation permit for Cambridge Action applicant Catherine Maginac. I did see that in the.
What, where, what are you looking at?
It was the amended.
It was the amended.
Oh, I have, I don't have that one.
I didn't see that in the packet, though. Just missed it.
It's item I.
It's item I, but I don't think it was included in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it was added to the agenda, you did not get the preservation permit application for policies. Internet was down for.
Okay.
Many outlets are put in. So is a park reservation permit for October 8.
I don't even, I can't.
Thank you. For 3 to 5 p.m. for Village Veterans Park for demonstration, middle-aged people assigned, mostly in the side park on Main Street, will be identified police.
This is for.
They may not, it says, organization name is Cambridge Action.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the park reservation permit, park reservation permit for Cambridge Action for October 18th from 3 to 5.
Jacobson will second that motion.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Right, anybody want to abstain? All right, the question carries. All right, so now we're going to go on to item J, which is most complete, convene inter close session per 1985 150 of the Wisconsin Statute to Concession to the impairment, promotion, compensation, performing evaluation data of Village employees' public labor position.